I'm glad you're here. Good afternoon and welcome to the Moore County Schools Board of Education work session for Monday, February 3rd at 1:30. Call us to order. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Do we have a second? Okay, motion approved by Mr. Benway, second by Ms. Bruno. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Mr. Benway, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Davis, if you'll please lead us in a moment of silence.
Yes ma'am, thank you. If you want everyone to join me for just a moment, please. Thank you.
At this time, we have several items under pending action and discussion. And Dr. Locklear, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Board members. Thank you for being here. We have Ms. Sinon, who's here today to introduce what is a yearly matter for the board, which is endorsing the opportunity to put out a draft calendar to our public. Per regulation, we do that after working with our calendar committee, sending it out to the public for their feedback on the draft calendar. We also know that that's tied up with the parameters of the North Carolina School Calendar law. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Jamie Sinon to kind of walk us through where we are with that, asking for your endorsement to put that out for public comment and feedback.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Board members and Dr. Locklear. In November 2024, we created a committee to propose calendar options for the 26-27 school year. As directed by board policy and regulation, this committee includes parents, school administration, certified school staff, classified school staff, and district staff. So based on the current draft that's in your packet, the first semester of classes would begin on August 26th, 2026. The second semester would be, would begin on January 26th, 2027. And the school year would end for students on June 11th, 2027. As a reminder, the school, North Carolina School Calendar law, districts must meet the following requirements. Start no earlier than the Monday closest to August 26th and end no later than the closest Friday to June 11th. We cannot have any educational purpose waivers. The calendar must cover at least nine calendar months. There's a minimum of either 185 days or 1,025 hours of instruction. Historically, Moore County Schools follows the 1,025 hours of instruction. We must have at least nine teacher workdays. We have to designate two workdays, which can be used for teachers to take accumulated annual leave. We have to have a minimum of 10 annual leave days. We have to follow the same legal holidays as those designated by the State Personnel Commission for state employees. We cannot have school on Sunday. And Veterans Day shall be a holiday for all public school personnel and all students enrolled in public schools, which means whatever day Veterans Day falls on, if it's a Wednesday, that's the day that we have off. We can't change it for a Friday or a Monday. So Moore County Schools' regulation requires that the calendar committee develop a tentative calendar on which all school system employees and the public may provide feedback. So the calendar committee requests the board's endorsement to place this calendar that's in your packet, the 2026-27 Draft Calendar, on the website for public comment and feedback from February 11th through February 25th of this year. The feedback will be gathered anonymously and the feedback will be compiled for the school board's review at the March 31st, 2025 work session, along with the calendar committee's recommendation for calendar adoption. So what you'll find in your packet is the proposed calendar draft, which details the days that students are in school, all of our required and optional workdays, all holidays, annual leave days are all listed there. You'll also find the calendar feedback form that we would like to send out through the website that just, again, details the Moore County Schools' calendar draft and also the North Carolina law requirements. We're asking for their role within Moore County Schools so that we can dissegregate that data. Are we, as, you know, what are parents saying, what are students saying, teachers, staff members, community members? We added a question in there for, so we can have a specific data point. The question was, I support the, or the statement was, I support the adoption of this calendar, and they would answer either yes or no. And then I also added a picture in there of what the General Statute 115(c)(84.2) says about the North Carolina School Calendar law and asked for feedback based on that. And then you also have within your packet the North Carolina Calendar Law guidelines and requirements that we have to follow.
And Board members, if you endorse gathering this feedback, as Ms. Sinon said, it'll be brought back to you at your April work session for potential adoption of a calendar. And recalling, we stay a couple of years ahead. That's why this is for the 26-27 school year. Also, when you brings back, Ms. Sinon brings that back to you in April, we'll have any tweaks in the calendar based on our restart schools and also it have our early college calendar as well, so.
Can I speak?
Open to questions and comments?
When you're finished? Are you finished?
Yes ma'am, just, just laying out what would happen. Go ahead, Ms. Bruno, I know you want to speak. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, this, this really, I, I am not for this at all and I won't vote for it. I think it's about time that Moore County goes on the early start. And I know it's against the law and I know what everybody's going to say. But look, it, teachers know that I am not for this traditional, that I am for the earlier start. I get phone call after phone call. Mrs. Bruno, please try and do something. We're teaching these kids, we finish at Christmas. We have to reteach them when they come back in January for the testing. Total waste of time. This is not me speaking, this is our teachers speaking. Especially the ones that are in the high school that are teaching sciences. I mean, we have, I think we have 19 other counties who have gone against the law. I, I just don't understand why everybody says, oh, well, we should do it, but it's against the law. I don't see why we have to pander to this, to this, to our senator. I, I just don't believe it. I think this is Moore County, we have to do what's best for our kids and our teachers. And I will not vote for the traditional one. That's all I have to say. Oh, I know what else I was going to say, unless you want to say it. Yeah, um, yes. I was also told when the school board had their convention that the number one thing that all the schools wanted was to have the early start. I don't see anything against it. We're not in the mountains, we're not at the beach where we're going to have all the travel industry yelling and screaming about that. I think it's time we go with the early start.
Any other questions, discussion?
I have, I have a couple of questions. So, well, actually, maybe I don't have a question now. I do have a couple of observations. Well, let me ask you this. Did you guys prepare a non-compliant calendar where the first semester ends before the holiday break? Has the central office done that like we've done in previous years? Here's what I would like to see, and I think maybe we should discuss this as a board. I would like to see two things. The first thing is, I would like to see, as I think we did in a previous year, a compliant and a non-compliant calendar put forth and let, and get input from the public.
The public was for it.
Right, overwhelmingly. And to your point, every, everybody, look, there are, there are, there is one person and there is Phil Berger, the President of the Senate, who, who is for this screwed up school calendar and the travel industry. And they, they, they penalize the education
Exactly.
of all of our students statewide to appease the travel industry because one guy, one establishment crony up there. And everybody's united, right, left, center. You cannot find, I mean, sure, you can find an exception or two, but you know, 99% of the people are in opposition of this calendar for many reasons. But the bottom line is, it penalizes the education of our students. And it causes, you know, stress because they have to worry about stuff. They can't drop their pack over the holidays. So anyway, I would like to see a, a non-compliant calendar put forth for the public to consider like we did in a previous year. The other thing I'd like to say, see, is I would like to see a survey, an anonymous survey of our certified staff. And let's find out what our certified staff thinks. Because I cannot find a single person, right, left, center, who, who thinks this extending the semester beyond the Christmas break is a good idea. So why don't we, why don't we do, why don't we survey our staff and find out what they think?
I agree. And this would, would line us up with the college. And I spoke to Neil Jackson the other day, and it is going to be brought up in the House again. The House will pass it, the Senate under Berger probably will not.
Yeah, he's too worried about wanting to pass legalization of marijuana and gambling in his home county.
Well, he's getting too much money from the travel industry.
Right. No, it's 100% of holding our children, holding the education of our children hostage because of a crony establishment dude who has all the power in the state. As a school board, as an independent oversight board, we should not tolerate that.
And I agree, and I think this is Moore County. Let's be independent, let's stand up for our students.
All right, Dr. Dahl?
I'm going to dissent from the two of you. Now, Robert's Rule says we're not supposed to speak critically of past actions, but I do think that in the not-too-distant past, the board put forth two calendars to the community. And the community, I think a lot of people, I don't remember what the numbers were, but a lot of people were in favor of the, the calendar that broke the law. And the board voted to follow the law. And my impression was that there were a lot of people in the community who felt betrayed by that. So I think that before we go down that road, we should at least take the temperature of this board to see if that would be another likely outcome. Because there's absolutely nothing to be gained by creating an episode that causes the community to feel betrayed. I, and I will tell you where I stand, and I told people this when I was campaigning, even though it was unpopular with most of the people I spoke to. I think that I have a duty to obey the law. You know, I'm in this position, there are lots of policies, I try to follow the policies. There are ethical rules, I try to follow the ethical rules. And there are laws, and I try to follow the laws. And to me, it's simple. How can anybody trust me to do what I'm supposed to do if I break the law?
It's a bad law.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other for round one of discussion?
Uh, yeah, so I'll, I'll chime in and just say that I also agree that for a long time, as a parent, as a teacher, we've agreed that this calendar and the way it's set up is not best for kids. I know that we've managed around it, and I think we've done so very successfully over the years. I don't know that we need to get a lot of survey feedback, to be honest with you. I feel like we've talked about this for years, and I feel like the temperature of the community is pretty clear. I think the parents are pretty clear on this. But I would ask if, if we could, what I don't know is a listing of other counties that have taken this path, how many years they've been doing this, and what, if any, consequences they've suffered from this. I think that would be good to visit as a board, just to have a well-informed decision.
Lee County just did this, and they have had no repercussion at all.
Yeah, I, I actually talked to someone from Lee County and I felt the same way, but I'm not sure which counties have done it for the longest, and I don't have that. I don't know if you guys got briefed on that before, but I've not seen that information.
All right, anyone else, round one? Yeah, wait, we're still in round one. Everybody gets a chance first, yeah. All right, Mr. Benway?
The last time, it really galled me to have to vote against a new calendar. The tail clearly is wagging the dog here. I think we need to rally the people of Moore County as part of this whole process. Rally the people of Moore County and present a front to the politicians who are standing in the way of, of change. We need to get our, our representatives, Neil, Tom, and Ben, to, to represent us as a, as a, as a, as a front to get this thing straightened out. We keep doing this year after year, we keep getting frustrated and frustrated. I feel like I'm betraying, frankly, the people of Moore County, but I have to follow the law. We need to change the law. We need to get our, our representatives on point and do that. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Davis?
Yeah, I will, I will speak to what Ms. Bruno alluded to earlier than, earlier this month, uh, ye, last year. We, we went to the North Carolina School Board Association Conference, and at that time, they had their legislative session. And that is the number one request across the, the state. So I think across the state and across this board, we agree that, that calendar is not what's best, but it is the law. I, I think we already have our legislators on board, they know, they agree with us.
They do, and they're, they're with us.
Then I, I would ask for two calendars to be presented. It, maybe this year it will change, and we need to be prepared in case it does. I would not, also would not suggest that we would survey the, we, the people, because we know, we know what they want, and it's, it's not going to change. That's all.
Yeah, just, I echo a lot of the same comments. It has been an issue for us as teachers and principals and parents for, I don't know, decades. And yes, I do agree that it's kind of held hostage by one person in our general assembly. And my solution is that we always follow the law as a board. Number one, we're, we're, you know, it's our duty. I would like to invite our legislators back to Moore County and continue the conversation that you started last year. And I feel like, I agree with you, Mr. Benway, that that's the way we need to proceed. I would also like to, for us to consider in the future to write a resolution and make it public that how we stand on certain issues like the calendar law. I also am very adamant about the opportunity voucher, which is a whole nother day. But I feel like as a board, we can speak for our people, for our teachers and our parents and families, and that we need to do it by following the law. Round two, anybody?
Yeah, I totally disagree. And I'm really, really tired of everybody saying, I'm for the kids, I'm for the kids, I want the best for the kids. And then they vote no on this law. I, I don't understand that. This is for our children. Burger's probably not going to be there next year. So I think it's good to take a step forward on this. Neil Jackson, McKinnis, these guys are all with us. And I, I just don't see any, any more, oh, we have to obey the law. It's a very bad law. And it does nothing for education for our students, absolutely nothing. I'm voting against the tradition.
Okay, anybody else, comment?
Madam Chair, could you reread the motion that we're considering?
Well, right now, we're just having pending action. It's to endorse the opportunity to gather public comment for the 2026-2027 school calendar. So it's really just to get public comment. So, you know, this will go to pending action for our board regular work session. It's just to get information right now. It's not to say we endorse it yet. So we've still got some time to gather public feedback.
Madam, Madam Chair, if, if there is a desire on the board for us to bring a early start calendar for consideration of the board, then I would just ask that the board make a motion of that and have the consensus of the board noted. So that would direct me as superintendent to, to either move forward or not move forward with that. As I said last time we addressed this topic, I have my own passions around the topic, but I will not recommend something that breaks the law. I get, we agree to disagree on that, Ms. Bruno, I get your stance and appreciate it very much. But I won't be recommending it. However, if the board directs me as superintendent to bring that option back for the board consideration, happy to do so.
Thank you, Dr. Locklear. So before we have a motion, I'd like to remind everybody of the workload and the effort. And, you know, we've done this before. Think about it before you make a motion. Do we have a motion?
So, but, before we do, why don't we do our second round of comment on this? Other word, we're, we're going to end up with this recursive thing, and then we don't have Rich here to remind us that we're like three levels deep and we're, you know, level one, round two, level three, round, you know.
All right, let's finish up round two of discussion on this item. Anybody else?
Yeah, so I have, I have, I have a few things in response to what people have said. You know, one person called for a united front with, you know, the school board, you know, the faculty and staff, politicians and stuff. I've called for that two years in a row. In fact, the first time we brought this up, I called for the media, I called for the editorial staff of The Pilot to join us because everyone wanted this. And the, the polit, look, with the united front, the politicians in, in Raleigh will fall. But the fact of the matter is, because the edit, the editors of The Pilot weren't really concerned about the education of our children, they were more worried about denying a, you know, political victory of the school board. They refused to join us. So once again, I call on the editorial board of The Pilot and, and editors across the state to, to present a united front with the school boards to stand with our faculty, staff, and students, and parents, the vast majority who want this. But, you know, we'll see if they, they will. It's worth noting that Wake County was going to defy the law. But then, you know, they didn't want to, you know, they made a political decision because they wanted to leave Senator Berger out to hang. So people are making political decisions over this when it's punishing the education of our children. And I'll go into how and why it's punishing the educational, the education of our children next Monday when we discuss this. I'm not going to talk about it now.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
What is the proposition that you're discussing?
That we, well, I, I want to, I support an alternative school calendar where the first semester ends before the Christmas break. And that's the way it's done in most other states. That's the way it's done. In fact, I think it's, that's the way it's done in 49, in public schools in 49 states, maybe 48, is the way it's done in all colleges and universities in the state of North Carolina. North Carolina public schools kind of stands alone in having the first semester extend past the Christmas break.
Okay, I'm going to be rude since Rich isn't here and interrupt.
Yeah, yeah, this is.
Our superintendent has asked that if we want to discuss something that is a motion other than moving forward with the survey as, as planned, that somebody make that motion so it's clear to him what we're discussing and he can decide whether he's going to have the staff act on it. So I just, that's why I asked you what you were discussing. It sounds like you're discussing a motion that hasn't been made. Do you want to make the motion?
No, 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 this is, this is round, this is round two of the first discussion. We did round one, and, and we were about to do a motion. So, and then I said, rather than do a recursive where like we have these nested motions and then we go down this rabbit hole and then we come back up. And then it's like, okay, I'm on round two of the first discussion. I, I suggested, and the chair concurred, that we just finish round two of the overall discussion. I mean, if we want to, if we want to go down the other rabbit hole, I'm certainly welcome to do that.
Okay, I, I heard all of that, and I was, in fact, listening. It's just that, the way you were addressing it, sounded like you were addressing the motion that needed to be made.
No, I was responding to, in our first round, somebody said that we, that we should have a united front with the public. And I'm addressing that and saying, you know, I called for that two years ago and I asked for the media statewide to join us. So I'm responding specifically to a comment that was made in the first round of conver, who made that? That we should have, yeah, Mr. Benway made that. So I'm responding to Mr. Benway's comment.
Okay. Excuse me, I'm, I'm trying to concentrate and keep up.
Everything I'm saying is in response to what something said, which is what, you know, obviously debates and discussions about.
Okay.
Okay, so I think it's worth noting that at the State School Board Association, the number one issue from the legislature was not more funding. Hmm, isn't that interesting? The number one issue was not more security, isn't that interesting? The number one thing for the state legislative affairs was changing the state calendar. So the academic industrial complex So the academic industrial complex as represented by the State School Board Association, their number one priority was not more funding, more school safety. It was changing this calendar. That, that in itself is a statement. Someone said that politicians are with us. And you know what? I have talked to, uh, many, many legislators, legislators. And you are right. They are all, they were all privately say that they are for it. I think it's time that these, uh, these politicians who will privately say one thing, I think it's time for them to stand up and make a public statement. Because I've not heard them make public statements on it because they're so afraid of defying the leadership and then they won't get these plum committee assignments. I think it's time for our legislatures to put up or shut up. They either talk publicly. If, if they're for it, then they need to publicly say they're for it, not go around and privately tell people they're for it. Ms. Dahl and then Ms. Caldwell, before Ms. Dahl, made a comment about following the laws. Uh, history is, 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 is full of, uh, situations where, um, right-minded, correct-minded people ignored the law. I mean, I guess it is in sight, you know, well-known examples, well-known examples. But also I had a recent, uh, example with this very board and that was Biden's illegal Title IX expansion via executive order.
Let's stay on topic.
And this board, this board had a decision to make. We could have bent a knee like, uh, Larry Caddell and Sandy Stewart did.
Remember our comments.
At Sand Hills Community College. And, uh, and we could have implemented that illegal executive order to the detriment of our faculty, to our, you know, our students. Uh, or we could have stand firm and said no. And you know what this board did? We stood firm and said no. And guess, guess how it turned out? We were correct. So sometime it is a person's duty to, um, to stand up for what is the correct thing for our faculty, staff and students. That's why we're an independent board. That's why we are not answerable to anyone except, you know, like criminal prosecutors. And there's a reason for that because sometimes you have to make those tough decisions. And then finally, my last point was, and I think, um, Dr. Locklear took care of that. We need to make a decision on whether or not we're going to present this calendar now because if we make a motion next week, it's too late. But that's exactly what Dr. Locklear suggested. So thank you very much. I'm now finished with my round two comments.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Yes.
That has not spoken yet in round two?
Have I spoken? I don't remember.
Go ahead.
Amy's keeping track.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the other thing is that why is it only the public schools? The charter schools don't fall. The parochial schools don't fall under this rule. So why is it only the public schools? The parochial schools, the charter schools get public funding. Why is it only the public schools? Something else to think about.
It makes us less competitive.
Yep, okay. Anybody else in round two?
That's very true.
Yeah, I'm making a motion. I have no comments.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Well, I'll just say, um, as a parent, having, having dealt with this for many years, um, I will say that, uh, I think the calendar law is wrong. And I think that the start and end times, we said that for many years. I don't feel that it's as detrimental as a huge monumental deal. I feel like if we were to change it, it would help students and parents. I feel as the only parent, current parent on the board, I would feel a obligation to represent those parents and their feelings. Um, and so I would like to look at that data again that was already done as far as the survey of parents. Um, and then again, as far as conversation around this topic, I think it would be helpful to look at the history of those counties that have, um, gone against the law and what has been any consequences, if at all, and how long they've been doing it. That would be something that would help inform my vote personally.
Thank you. Dr. Dahl, okay?
Um, just to be clear, um, I detest this law probably as much as anybody here and always have. But I did get a, an interesting bit of perspective, uh, in my experience teaching in Montgomery. They created a calendar there that had a shorter semester that ended before Christmas and a longer semester. Um, and the short-long thing brought some, some of its own problems. But all of these teachers who have hated the calendar law for so long have reflected on our experience for the past year and a half and said, you know, it really didn't make that much difference to the kids to have exams before Christmas. That coming back after Christmas, having a few days to review and having exams was really not that bad.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Benway. Did you, okay. Again, um, I know that there are lawsuits out against counties that broke the law. And I do not want more county to be in that, um, predicament. Uh, I think it's important for us, you know, we do have a travel industry here. I mean, we're, we're huge with our community and tourist. Excuse me. But again, um, I think our route of action is to provide a board resolution, to talk to, again, to our legislators and, you know, maybe we do need to invite our, you know, pap- local papers to help with that and other groups. But, um, at this time, I feel like it's not in our best interest. I feel like we've already got our data from the last year when we did our calendar. And I, I don't want to use our staff time to do that extra work at this time. I think we've got a lot more, um, pressing things to do. Because right now, you know, there's, the law's not going to change anytime soon until hopefully, you know, we get new leadership in our general assembly. All right, so we're through with our rounds.
I got something else to say. I totally disagree with that.
That's okay.
Um, I think that, um, I think we need to, I would like to make the motion to put an alternative calendar out. What?
I'm going to make the motion.
Oh.
I mean, you can if you want to.
I mean, I just don't want this to say, okay, we're going to approve this without doing anything else.
All right, so Ms. Davis, do you have a motion?
The reason I would want to suggest is, and I, I agree that I, that the chances of the law changing are slim. But I don't want us to be unprepared if they do change. So I would amend to have the alternative.
So you want to make a motion?
Make a motion to have the alternative early start or whatever the proper name for that would be, uh, to be presented along with this. So if we need to block and tackle, we can.
I second it.
All right, we have a, a motion in front of the board. We have a second, um, Mr. Hensley motion by Ms. Davis. Are we good with discussion or can we go ahead and vote?
No, we want to discuss it.
All right, we're, we're doing a, yes, sir.
Sorry, Madam Chair, can I just get, make sure I'm very clear on the motion? The motion would be to bring the alternative early start calendar as one of the options for the board to consider when they vote on a calendar. Is that correct? So that would be bringing that forward on March thirty-first. So to that point, certainly if we have information or data to Mr. Johnson's request that we already have availability to, we have the survey data from when we did it last time. We've got some of that data in the background we could share back with the board.
Okay.
I, I don't, my only change would be to have the two calendars. I would not suggest that we do any more surveying of the public because we do already, we, we, we know what they want. We know what they need, really.
Is that, is that motion clear?
Now, I'm confused. No, that, that completely muddied it for me.
We're not taking, I, I don't have one emotion to take any type of surveys from the public because we know what the public wants. The only change that we're having is two presentations, one for the early start calendar that would not necessarily follow the law and then the one, this one that's already been presented for us to vote on in March.
For us to vote on? But the thing that we're asked to, uh, gather public comment would not be affected under your motion?
Well, that comes naturally. I'm not asking for additional public comment. Excuse me if that was.
I'm still confused. I'm sorry. Are we asking, is the motion to ask the public to comment on two calendars? Or is the motion to ask the public to comment on the calendar that is before us? And then when we come back in March, we consider both calendars?
Okay, so the way I understand it, the motion is to add a second calendar for public comment. Is that correct or not?
That's what I would like. It, 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 it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem to make sense to have a second calendar and not present it for the public.
So we're just gathering public input on two calendars. One, the one that Ms. Sinon shared today, and then a second one that would be an early start sample calendar. So we're just making a motion to, for the team, the Moore County Schools team, to create a second calendar. That's what we're on, what's on the table right now.
Uh, if I may, Madam Chair, put my team on the spot. Uh, Ms. Sinon, Dr. Metcalf, uh, are we able to pull off having that on, uh, a template by next Monday?
Yeah.
I want you to answer honestly.
Or maybe by March?
Uh, this is to go out right now.
February eleventh, yeah. So that would be a quick turnaround.
For us to do that properly, we would need to bring back the calendar team. I think there's thirteen, fourteen, fifteen people on the calendar team. So a week to turn that around would be difficult. I would say that we still do have the data that Mr. Johnson was asking to see from last year when we put that out to the public. Certainly can make that available to the board. My expectation is it wouldn't be much different if we were to survey again.
Yep.
Let me, uh, I mean, we're not discussing the motion. We're just having an informal discussion right now, it appears. So let me, let me say this in, in response to what Mr. Metcalf said. Oh, actually even broader than that, this illustrates the flawed planning process that I've discussed in the past. You know, the fact that here we are, you know, anyone, if anyone would have taken the temperature of a board, of the board, Pauline was talking about this a month ago. And if, and if, if the temperature would have been taken of the board prior to today, this wouldn't be a surprise. And the central office probably would have prepared an alternate calendar when they had that, uh, when they had that committee convened. Quite frankly, I'm disappointed. I mean, this has been an issue the last two years. I'm kind of disappointed the central office didn't anticipate that and do it. But again, it goes back to a planning process. Any, anybody taking the temperature of, of the board would have said, man, we need to present this. And then we're not jumping through hoops, you know, my gosh, we don't have ti- you know, not having time for something is some frequently an excuse for, you know, not planning properly.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. Uh, Ms. Davis, did you have any, did you want to change your motion or? Okay, so I don't know if we can, we may have to change our feedback point if we ask the staff to create a early start calendar.
Keep in mind, this is planning for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. This is, this is out into the future. Uh, because we're two years ahead with our school calendars. And so we could simply, if the board votes for there to be a second calendar added to this consideration, we could sim- simply then bring that back for your consideration a month from now.
Okay.
Um, it's, it was my intent directing staff working on this as we worked on it, to work on it based on policy and based on law. That was my planning process, Mr. Hensley.
All right, thank you, Dr. Locklear. Um, would you like to make a motion to push it to the March work session?
I'm not, I don't object to that at all. If that, if that's.
You have to make the motion.
I would like to make the. Can I amend mine? Okay.
I don't know how, I don't know, do you, can the person make it a motion, withdraw it? I'm not sure how that works.
Yes, she can.
Are you sure?
Yes. Like, resend it.
On my mic's off, I'm sorry. To move it to the March meeting with two calendars being presented. And I would just like to add, I think, I, and I'm sorry that we didn't think about it sooner, that, that, for whatever reason. But all the more reason I think to do it if it's two years from now, because certainly by then it's more likely that the law would be changed than for this coming year. I think we need to be prepared for it to change because it's a big push from across the state.
Could somebody?
To be clear, you're asking for two calendars to be presented for public comment.
Yes, correct.
For public comment.
That's what I heard.
When it's presented, yes, sir.
So this item is really going to move to the March.
I will, if the motion is, and I was unclear, if the motion is that, that a second calendar, a second non-compliant calendar be created and that the survey presenting both be delayed until March. If that's the motion, I will second that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table from Ms. Davis for an additional, uh, calendar to be created for our review by Mar- for our March third work session. We have a second for, from Mr. Hensley and this is for public hearing. All right, so I want to make sure that's clear. All right, any discussion?
I have a discussion point. You know, it's interesting and I, I'm, I, as many times as you, you think about stuff and talk about stuff, you always come up with a different angle, right? And, uh, Ms. Bruno talked about how, uh, you know, private schools are not, um, you know, obliged to obey this calendar. Uh, you also stated that, um, uh, charter schools are not, I, I don't know, is that true? I, I don't know. But, but let's say.
It's correct. Charter schools have calendar flexibility. Uh, private schools who receive public funding also don't have to follow this law. That is correct.
Okay, so only traditional public schools have to follow it. So, you know, it's actually interesting because I always saw this as, you know, strictly a, you know, as I said passionately a while ago, strictly a, uh, move by the travel and tourism industry. It could also be a really, really smart diabolical move by the general assembly to put traditional public schools at a disadvantage to charter schools and private schools. Because, you know, and we'll discuss this when we actually do the debate, but there is, there is empirical evidence. Well, I mean, I'll go ahead and throw out parts of it right now. Look, delaying, the putting, putting the exams off until after the holiday break has several downsides. One is there's learning loss over that two weeks. It has to be made up. And there's many people who've made the argument that that, that that results in several points drops at end of semester grades. Most importantly, uh, continuing the semester over the break, it, 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 it harms the mental health of our students. And here's why. Breaks, breaks, whether it's, you know, leave from the military or a vacation from work or a break from school. The idea of a break is you set your pencil down, you drop your pack and then you go and enjoy your, your vacation, whether it's the Christmas holidays or spring break. And then you come back refreshed mentally, physically, and you're ready to start another day. Well, if a student has, uh, you know, the worry of final exams, final projects, term papers, if they're worried about that over the weekend, then they really don't get a break. Because whether they, you know, act on it or not, they have that stress and it affects their mental health. So there are many, many reasons why forty-nine states and pl- forty-nine states plus the, the, the colleges and universities in North Carolina, everybody who can, there's a reason why they end the semester at the, at the beginning of the break. And that is for the mental health so that the students can drop their pack and go enjoy their vacation. And this law denies that.
All right.
And puts traditional public schools at a disadvantage. Thank you.
Yes, sir. No, no, it's okay. I was ready. All right, uh, are we good? Any other discussion? All right, so we're voting on the motion now. All right, so Ms. Davis made a motion to move this item to the March third work session. And for the team, Moore County Schools team, to add an early start calendar. This is only for public, um, endorsement and public comment, really. And so we will move this item to the March third work session. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
All right, we had, um, six aye and one no. It's Dr. Dahl. Yeah, six and one. And that was it. Okay, all right, thank you very much. All right, Dr. Locklear, item B.
Yes, sir. We have, uh, a routine yearly bringing of the, uh, high school course guide for approval. Any changes? Uh, new courses, et cetera. Any changes, new courses, et cetera, we bring to the board each year for your approval. I got Dr. Metcalf and Ms. Gephardt.
I'm going to turn it right over to the wonderful Ms. Gephardt. Yes, we have done some revisions and updates to the course guide for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and she's going to brief you on that very quick.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Locklear, board members. We're excited to bring to you the opportunities that we will have for our twenty-five, twenty-six course guide for our high school kiddos. We definitely do this course guide to make sure students and parents know courses that are offered and have the opportunity to sit down and do course planning for four years of their high school career. This course guide is very extensive and offers the opportunity for the guidance counselors to sit down with our students and really map out what they need to take and give them all the variety of opportunities, opportunities that they have. We have a couple of changes that are, that we're going to go over. The first being more just some state changes with the new arts curriculum. So the arts used to have a beginning level, an intermediate level, a progress, a proficient level, and an advanced. And they have changed some of this coursework to be, instead of the beginning level now for vocal music orchestra and band, we now have a novice and developing. What that means is a student may come out of a three-year program in high school and they may go immediately into the intermediate class, or they might still be in a developing class, or they might be brand new at the high school level, taking course for the first time and be a novice level student. So DPI has opened up the leveling system within the courses. The intermediate will be no change, but the proficient level that I, I'm going to have to change my articulation, the proficient level is now labeled as accomplished. Accomplished and advanced are both inherently honors arts course opportunities. So that is a change that will be reflected for our students in the course guide. Another change that has, that has, coming from our career and technical education side of the course guide, looks at financial planning. They have removed that from the CTE course offerings because all of our students in high school must take the course, Economics and Personal Finance. It is required as a fourth graduation requirement. So, so that we can make sure all of our kids have that CTE, drop that course in order to be able to add some additional things, which you see there, they're offering, the Family and Consumer Science, Hospitality and Tourism, one and two are now offered at Pinecrest. And then another new change will be that the JR, JROTC levels will be now sitting under CTE with the opportunity for JROTC Level Three to have a credential from the CTE coursework. So that, that's just a few changes there. We did make a revision from the social studies, and we're trying to be very forward-thinking with this. So the Bible is History is offered for the first time this school year. We, we have a course going on currently at Northmore High School. There are sixteen students in that course at Northmore High School. We, we haven't gotten much feedback yet because we haven't gotten to the end of the course. But with this new course guide and really looking at the standards and then looking at some ways to make sure that this course may, may fit, and you heard me say the word "may," our, the Department of Public Instruction is looking at new English standards that will be implemented in school systems in twenty-six, twenty-seven. As a result, you will hear us talk a lot about banded grade bands of English standards. So it'll be K-two, three, five, six, eight, nine, eleven. Twelfth grade English is going to be a course that will now be a standalone, and it will have some flexibility of trying to get kids into a different opportunity of using some real-world reading within that English. We are hoping that this would be a great class for students to take as their senior, and count as their senior English. So we are proposing to move, move Bible is History. We're able to use the same text, and the teacher that is currently teaching that at Northmore, she, she is a social studies and English major, so she would be able to continue to teach that course. We also had the request to offer a leadership development course for both Pinecrest and Union Pines. We currently offer this course through the North Carolina Virtual Public High School. What our principals have said is they would like to have the opportunity to all, offer this course and really hit leadership development for our students with one of their teachers. So we're adding that as a general elective for students in grades ten through twelve at those two schools. The other real exciting thing, if you click on there, you will see that we have the more innovative high school area of the course guide that is still being worked on with the working title there. And then we have a whole area for the Connect Virtual Academy so that their families have ease and accessibility to their courses and the, and the things that they are offering at both of those locations. So not too many changes, just a few within CTE, a few with the honors that is coming from the state, and asking for the history, Bible is History to be moved to an English opportunity and then having the leadership class. Those are the big changes. We'll be glad to take any questions.
I have questions.
Any questions?
Um, I have two questions.
Okay.
Um, wait, I just forgot one. So what, I'm curious, the leadership class sounds really cool. And I'm curious, you know, what area would the teacher be licensed in for that? And do you see maybe expanding it to Northmore?
I, I would hope eventually. Right now, it was based on, it is, it does not have a specific, like, I don't have to have a specific major to teach the leadership. So for example, at Union Pines, it's being taught by my band teacher, who is a great, he is just an Energizer Bunny, so he is going to be a great leader.
He taught my daughter leadership.
He teaches a lot of us leadership. So because of his programming, they were able to offer that as one of his sections and still keep the band and the jazz band, et cetera. But they're offering that as one of his select, his sections. So what, what we're really hoping is that it does take off at Pinecrest. What Northmore had to look at is the balance of what would they have to, what would they have to change in order to be all, all for it? And I'm sure Joseph will be looking at that down the road of what can I put in to have that leadership development? It's a great course.
Question. With respect to the revision to social studies and English, how many folks do you expect that to affect?
The, the Bible is History?
Yes.
The Bible is History, again, right now, we have sixteen students, and the teacher that is teaching that is both English and social studies certified. So as we do get ready for registration this time, I, I feel like we can definitely put that in as an English elective in our schools if it does continue to make, as I said, Northmore is the only spot that had the number of students that was necessary for us to be able to offer it. So I'm sure Northmore will be able to continue, and that, that teacher who is currently teaching it will still be able to currently continue to teach that course.
Thank you.
And Mr. Benway, making an English class may promote other students to take that course. May increase those numbers at both those other two schools as well.
Thank you very much.
Uh, yeah, I was just going to ask, that, that course that is going to be English Four, that kind of a replacement as an elective for English Four, or do we have?
Not right, it's not permanent right now, but on the horizon.
So do you anticipate other courses coming along that will also fill that elective?
The guidance that we're being given at this point in time, it could be English Through the Arts. That was the one that DPI is currently putting out. But the idea is to put real-world English, a real-world connection with English reading and writing into the content area so that if I want to be a, I'm, I'm going to use health science, that I'm reading, I'm, I'm learning how to read more medical, that kind of stuff through that course. We're, we're waiting, I won't say patiently, we are anxiously waiting to see what happens. We are in, in the spring, we will be in draft two. So I don't know if draft two will look drastically different from draft one, but I know this was a big push from the Department of Public Education and the English Department.
Well, I, I think it's a good move. I mean, my daughter, first year in college right now, they have a lot of those types of courses where they can kind of connect to their passions and then read and write about it. So I think it's a good move.
Exciting. Ms. Bruno?
Yes, Donna, explain a little bit more about the, the bonds, the grade bonds, where you're doing one and two.
Oh, the bands, the grade bands, yes.
Bands, I can't read my own writing.
Again, it's not affirmative yet. We will be doing a round two, but the first English draft that DPI came out with.
Excuse me, is this only for English?
This is only for English. They are looking at a cluster of standards being for K-two, three, five, six, eight, nine, eleven, and then the twelfth grade English would be a standalone. So what they're looking at is you have this set of, of standards, and you have that band to teach it in, with the lexile being what differs within each of those bands.
Okay, explain more, what's the thinking behind that?
I'm, I'm not sure. From what we've heard from DPI, it is to give more time for students to truly analyze to the depth of those standards and give us more time to really get to the depth of those standards. We have, and I will say, Moore County was very well represented with feedback in those, in that standard course of study. And again, we just finished round one of feedback. Very proud of our teachers for their commitment to looking at English. So we'll see what happens with draft two and then going forward from there if they do get a vote on the English standards in the early summer.
Okay, but are, are, I'm, I'm, I, I need to know a little bit more about this. So first grade, their standards, and are they doing this so that you don't, if you don't meet the standards in first grade, you'll meet them in second? Is, are we downing it down?
No, no, remember I said it's based on, it's a cluster of standards based on a lexile? So we would have a specific, specific criteria within that band that we would have to be meeting. It just means that we're going to have to train our teachers on how to pick appropriate texts, how to make sure we are teaching to the depth of the standard and, and increasing the rigor within.
Okay, are the first and second grade teachers going to work together? More?
That could be, it could be a vertical, it could be where we do more vertical planning. Again, we want to see, again, I, I'm getting weigh the cart before the horse.
Right, and I understand.
I just wanted you to know that that English twelve, the history, Bible is History, through that English twelve was for forward-thinking on our part.
And I think that's excellent.
In case these standards do get approved.
Okay, are you still using the same Bible book?
Yes.
Yeah, I love that book. That's great. Okay, so when they get to be a senior, what, what, what happens then?
So like I said, it could be that they get their senior English through a different lens. It could be the Bible is History would be my senior English. Dr. Metcalf, who has a passion for automotive, might have an automotive lens through his senior English. So there'll be certain things that we've got to do with our senior Englishes. Again, we're starting to think through that, but we haven't gotten all the guidance that we're going to need in order to make sure that we are ready for this.
Okay.
Stay tuned. It's, it's coming fast and furious to a.
We're ahead.
We're trying to get ahead.
All right, I understand that, and I really appreciate it, and I really love what you did with the Bible class. I think that's really good.
I think it's going to be a positive.
Yeah, so for senior year, there isn't going to be a curriculum of?
No, there's a curriculum. So I would teach my Bible is History through that curriculum, through that lens. So we'll have standards and we'll teach, but it's, it's more of a flexible, if I could teach arts through that, I could teach health science, I could teach Bible is History. So I'm, I'm super excited because I do think it'll give more opportunity for Bible is History.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Any other questions?
I just have a couple of questions. Mr. Bachelor, link on the, on the agenda item, there's a second link, a link to the course guide website.
It's draft.
And this is, I'm sorry, it's draft.
It is draft.
Yeah, no, this, kudos to whoever created this. This is a great website. So I have a question. So I just, you know, as a parent, you know, someone who wants to know what's, what's offered, where, is there a matrix somewhere where I, you know, it's got the courses listed, and then it's got like Union Pines and, you know, Pinecrest, and you can just look at a matrix?
Oh, you mean individually? No, you'd have to go under, so like when our guidance counselors are sitting down with our students, we would go under, let's say I'm, I'm going to use the arts because that's the first one, let's say I'm a, of a band student. They would click on that, and I would be told, now, of course, I would pick one that everybody offers, but the guidance counselor sort of sit down and guide me with my planning for that upcoming next year. And they would ask me certain things, like what's, what's your CTE or whatever your?
I would just suggest that whether it's a board member or a parent who just want, I want to see what's offered at Pinecrest versus Union Pines. It seems like a matrix that has the courses and then has the schools and then offered yes or no. Because I'm interested in what's being offered at the Innovative High School, you know, what's different about it? And if you go back, Mr. Bachelor, if you go back one, for example, and there's a hole in this website, if you go, just scroll down to math, right, right there, mathematics, yep. And if you go down, it's like there's no math courses offered at the Innovative High School, so that can't be correct.
Remember, there's a different tab for them.
Right, so if you go to Innovative High School, it only has like six classes.
That, remember, that is still, we're working with Ms. Siconi on what is going to be the bigger picture. These are the ones that we know of based on the application and programming at this point in time that we know are going to be offered next year and the year after.
Yeah, so it's, it's very difficult for me as a board member to vote to approve a high school course guide for the Innovative High School when it's not complete. And, and also to help us make that decision, a matrix showing what's offered at the, at the Innovative High School versus all the other high schools, you know, seems like it would be a good tool.
So I'll, I'll double check behind that. I appreciate the question, Mr. Hensley. But remember, at the Innovative High School, we front-load all their required courses, which I believe are in there, and their electives, which happen in their eleventh, twelfth, and possibly thirteenth year, are all through the college. So that's really the college handbook and what's available to them through that. So, so things that are not required, they really don't have access to that because it's entirely different view. Their elective, their interests, their career tech classes, all run through the college.
So you're saying?
So the front-loaded is just those, just those basic classes that they need to get over in their first two years to open up the college classes later.
Right, but this website is not just electives, right? Or is this just electives?
For the, for, for the Innovative High School, for the Innovative High School, it would just be the required Moore County Schools courses that they would take in their freshman and sophomore year. And then when they hit their junior, senior, and potentially thirteenth school year, it would be, it would be not us. It would be the colleges.
Are those required courses listed on here?
These are required courses.
Hold on, stop.
For high school graduation.
If you could scroll up, please.
I believe.
Yeah, keep going, keep going. All the way to the top, Mr. Bachelor, I'm sorry. Okay, so this does in fact list all the courses that.
I believe, I'll, I'll double check. Because I think it's a legitimate question, but I believe that is correct.
Yeah, yeah. I, I also think, I mean, look, I don't, I'm never for creating work just for work, but it seems like a quick reference, you know, here's, here's the courses, here's where they're offered, so you could compare and contrast the differences. So anyway, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Item C.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This next item is bringing to you as a requirement of change, revise state board policy. This is, as a result of that policy change, we now have the opportunity to offer arts, education, proficiency diploma. And what the board, each local board of education has to approve is the list of activities that a student could earn through that list to get that endorsement, and it has to be outside of instructional hours of a classroom. Not trying to steal your thunder, just moving as long as efficiently as possible, Ms. Gephardt. Dr. Metcalf?
Already done that. I'm going to do what I do best, which is sit here quietly and hand it over to Donna.
So under State Board Grad Policy 007, there are many high school endorsement opportunities. All this is, is a seal that could go on their diploma. We, we get these seals to the students and some put them on diploma, some do some other things with them. But the new one that just came out in twenty-four, twenty-five is a new grad policy for the arts, and we're very excited in the arts world to have this arts endorsement opportunity. There are some very, some very specific guidelines that they have to complete for arts classes. Now notice it says arts, it doesn't, I could do drama, band, and then two orchest- Now notice it says arts. It doesn't, I could do drama, band, and then to orchestra, and that would fulfill the requirements of that art endorsement. I must make a B in all of those classes, so I have to have at least a B in all four of those classes. But what is a different piece to this endorsement that's unlike the other endorsements is we have a required 40 hours of arts extracurricular that kids would have to participate in, keep a log on, that is not part of a school grade. It cannot be graded. If anything is graded, we cannot count that. So in working with my arts leads, they are very passionate about this and giving the kids the opportunities. But we have to bring to you guys as a board, a list of opportunities that you would vote on and allow us to look at as part of the arts endorsement for our students. So if Charlie were to go to, um, the next slide and click on the arts activities, you will find that in this sheet, we've got the, what would classify from the music department. We do not offer dance. However, we have a lot of students who take dance and spend a lot of time in our dance studios. So we're giving them the opportunity to count that as their extracurricular opportunity, theater and visual arts. So this, these are just some different activities that a student may do within that discipline that would count for them for that extra 40 hours of extracurricular activity. So for example, if I'm an art student and I go attend the musical at Pinecrest High School, that could count as an arts endeavor for me and I would fill out my reflection sheet. So what you are actually voting on is that this list of approved art activities, again, that our high school arts leads put together and did a lot of conversation about that. And then they did add at the very bottom, if Charlie scrolls down, looking at any additional event that may be counted, um, and that would be with the teacher and my approval. So they, they realize that this list is not exhaustive and there might be things that come up in one year that might not be in other years. So they wanted to make sure our kids had every opportunity to earn this endorsement that are wanting this endorsement. So we're super excited to have this. Again, this is all extracurricular. Um, I, I, I know they're, the DPI granted in this year for our seniors that they can go back a year to get their hours in. And I'm sure our kids are not gonna have any trouble getting the hours in, but we're super excited about this. Um, that last sheet on there was just the reflection sheet. Our teachers felt like it was very important not just to list the activity for them to sign off on, but to add a layer of reflection so that our students would tell what they gained out of that extracurricular activity. And I'll be glad to take any questions. Any questions? Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, a few que, this is awesome, by the way, you know, I boy, I mean, the, the arts, you know, all ex, all extracurricular activities to include the fine and performing arts are important. Uh, so how many students do you think that we have that would, uh, you know, pursue this? I mean, just rough guess.
I would say probably at each high school, I would say we'd probably have about anywhere from 75 to 100. Our musical program, our drama, our musical theater program is very robust and it includes those art kiddos as well as the band and orchestra students. So I, I do suspect a lot of our students who are very passionate and are pursuing things within the arts as a post-secondary or even in the job force will want that diploma seal.
So 70 to 100 students per high school?
I'm thinking.
Wow, that's, uh, okay. So ju, just a couple of thoughts just to throw out. One is, uh, it would be nice if there was some sort of recognition at graduation. I don't know if that had been considered.
Probably would be on the program. Uh, it would be marked noted on the program. They're graduating with the arts.
Right, but I, I think, so, but you know, it could also be a tab or a ribbon or, uh, it could also be a vocal recognition. I, I don't know what's practical, but it seems that, uh, you know, these students should get some recognition, uh, visible recognition. Uh, and then secondly, my only observation is 40 hours spread out over four years isn't a whole lot. Uh, have, I, I think we might wanna consider maybe 40 years, 40 years. That's, that's a, that, yeah, we're going, we're, I'm expanding this now. Yeah, no, no, no. Uh, you know, maybe for, I mean, you, you know, like, what, there's, how many weeks in a semester?
18.
18, you know, and maybe 40 hours in, well, 18 weeks, huh?
Yeah, and I, I think where my, and I'm gonna go with the visual arts because she was the one who really said, I want to make sure that I'm guiding my students and they, that the visual art, like the drama students are gonna have 40 hours just in one year.
Right.
But, um, we wanna make sure that all of our children, because remember, if I'm doing it for my class, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use the AP which broke my heart. AP does a lot of critique and work outside of the school hours. But because that AP portfolio is sent off for graded, they can't count any of that time that they're spending doing that AP work outside of the school day as part of their hours. So I, I would, I really, since the state said 40 hours, I think their goal is to make sure kids have other opportunities, like the soccer player who's also the band, who, that we, that we're giving them that 40 hours over that time and giving them also other opportunities with other curricular areas.
Yeah, just to finish my thought, I was thinking maybe 40 hours in the last two years. But you know what, there's practical applications. You guys are the experts. But I, I really think that we should, there should be some, uh, recognition. And maybe it is just recognition of the program, maybe it's a, you know, a ribbon tab or whatever. Or, you know, if possible, you know, with special distinction as they cross the stage, you know, or whatever it said. Anyway, that's all. Thank you.
No, that was just, I was unclear if it was 40 hours a year or 40 hours for the, and, yeah, and I, I, I agree that it seems kinda low, but I understand the perspective and the reality of it too. Thank you.
Well, I'll chime in and say, I love it and I've got a, a student that will probably be doing that as well. Um, my question was, so this takes effect, so?
This year.
This year. So students can start working on their hours this year.
That, and, and that's where typically it, the, um, policy for this year's seniors, they went, they let us go back retro. So it did go into effect. We got guidance on this September, October. That was, even though it had gone into effect at the beginning of the school year.
Gotcha. And I would, I would also, um, agree that some recognition would be great. I think it also could be a good marketing tool because I think our arts programs are the best and the more that we can underline that, the better. Um, and, um, I had one more thought and it's flying out of my brain. Oh, about the hours. Um, I, I think the hours are okay because, you know, 40 hours doesn't seem like a lot unless you are a student that doesn't have a lot of transportation, that doesn't have a lot of parental support. I think it's important to keep that in mind.
I wanna comment that that's a great list. As you were introducing this, I was thinking of all the students that I've had who are super creative, who did oddball things and going, I hope there's a mechanism that those oddball things could be covered. And, you know, the, the teachers and people who put their heads together to come up with this, you know, they covered every single thing that I could think of. Um, and in connection with the recognitions, um, would, would this fit into the honor cords system worn at graduation? Or was that only a Northmore thing?
We do not have an honor cord for this. It is noted in the, um, it is noted in the program. And remember, there are a number of badges and so a number of students, some students get multiple badges. And so with the way we have honored students is in the graduation bulletin. We of course can look at that and talk with our principals about that, see if there's a feasible way to provide more recognition. There are obviously time constraints and other things, but the principals can give us that feedback.
I think the best place is on the resume and in the university interview, they can share that and in their life experience because we know the arts are so important. And thank you for all the comments. Thank you.
You get a nice little sticker that they can put on their diploma.
Yes, yes, I like stickers. All right, thank you very much. Okay?
An additional round two comment. So, um, look, you know, we have to be thinking about whether this is an action item or an agenda item or, you know, an action or, uh, consent. Thank you for next week. And here's where I'm at, and I think we just take a consensus of the board, is if the central office agrees to look at appropriate recognitions beyond just in the program, and I'm thinking the, whatever it's called, the cord program. Uh, if they agree to do that, then I think this is a consent agenda item for next week. Otherwise, we're gonna discuss in minute detail, you know, what's an appropriate recognition.
I would say that currently we, we trust a lot of that. There's some, there's some school traditions with that. There's some things that they do at each individual high school. Uh, there's several things that are noted with different symbols in the graduation program that denotes a child's experience or, um, something they've been recognized for. Per, um, policy, we recognize obviously valedictum on the stage. We recognize anyone who's entering our armed services or going into an RTC program at a university. Uh, we also recognize our CTE, uh, top student that's graduating per policy. Um, so we already do that. Uh, this is not without warranting celebration, uh, but there's several other things. Um, but it's something that, that we can, we can look at, but also rather not make a commitment without having some discussion with my high school principals.
Right, right. And, and to that end, Dr. Locklear, so you notice I backed off from a verbal recognition. My proposal is, rather than the board discussing and debating it next week and potentially mandating it, is if, I think I heard several other board members express that there needs to be some sort of recognition. This is a new program, so it's a new tradition. You know, you mentioned that schools have different traditions that evolved over the time. This is a new program coming down from the state and we ought to just have a uniform policy. You should come up with a, you, you, the central office should come up with a uniform policy as to how they're gonna be recognized. Otherwise, it's not gonna be uniform and everyone will do it different. And then a year from now, we'll be sitting here mandating a policy.
Yeah, and this might be appropriate for the policy committee to take up. Um, so if the other items are under policy, it might be appropriate at that point.
And I, I don't even know that we need a po, I don't think it needs a policy. I think that the central office should give guidance. And I, I'm, I'm really very nicely offering a way out is if the central office will agree to take a look at it, then there's really no further discussion from the board. Just here's what we decided to do. And I'm sure that it will be, everyone will find it sufficient. Otherwise, we'll just be talking about it next week.
Okay, we'll take that. Thank you very much. Great job.
So I, I guess my question is?
Yes, sir.
When we get to that.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll take a look at it. We'll ha, we'll need to review this in context of what we're doing with like NC Scholars Program and different things like that, that different recognitions and stickers that kids can get on their diplomas currently. And we'll take a look at what we're currently doing and if we wanna ramp that up in a different wa, and what that would be. We, we just gotta gather all the information. We'll take a look at it. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we're doing pretty well. Let's, if we're good, we'll keep going. Item D, out of state field trips. Dr. Locklear?
Thank you, ma'am. Turn it right over to Ms. Metcalf. I believe we've got, uh, pretty routine, um, field trips, but go ahead.
Three of them. Um, Cranes Creek Middle School would like to take their eighth grade students to Washington DC, uh, April 9th through April 11th. Pinecrest High School Interact Club would like to participate in service and leadership activities. Um, they take place in Kissimmee at Walt Disney World and it is, uh, uh, national, all of the internet, uh, clubs. That's April 10th through the 15th. High Falls, Westmore, and Elise Middle School, they have, they combine their band and their orchestra. They would like to travel to Carowinds and to, um, Winthrop University to participate in musical adjudication. Um, that's April 25th, so they don't stay overnight. They'll just come right back. All right, thank you very much. Any questions?
Okay, I kinda hate to ask this, but what's the travel plan for the eighth grade going to DC?
So, um, they, um, are traveling by charter bus. And so they, um, will have at least a minimum, right now, they have 10, uh, they have one shepherding for each 10 students, but they're actually recruiting for more than that. Um, and then they take security precautions, um, for the hotel and, and in their travel.
Thank you.
So, I have, I have a quick, so I was one, I was wondering, sorry, I was wondering what the Interact Club was and I looked it up real quick. And, uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, sponsored by the Rotary Club and it goes back to something that, um, we have a lot of, we have a lot of organizations that do a lot of good things, uh, in our schools, whether it's the Ro, it's, whether it's the Lions Clinic that, that does vision screening or whether it is the, uh, uh, the, uh, the Rotary Club doing this. I believe, and if we want, if we want community organizations to continue to do this, which we clearly do, we need to come up with recognition for these community organizations who do things in our schools. That's just a, a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. Thank you, Ms. Metcalf. You're signing. All right, item E.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, this is, uh, for a, we've got Dr. Metcalf back up and Neil Waters and also Sarah Chapman, who I don't believe the board's had the opportunity to meet. And I'll let Neil introduce Sarah. Uh, she's been with our team for a while, or Mike to introduce Sarah.
Stealing my thunder.
Uh, but this is something the board has seen before, uh, the need to amend a contract based on student needs and things that we're, um, you know, tasked with as a exceptional children's department. So I'll turn it right over to Dr. Metcalf.
Yeah, very excited to introduce you. I think for the first time, our, uh, new leadership team from the exceptional services, uh, exceptional children's services department. This is Neil Waters. You've known Neil. He was our assistant director. He is now our chief administrator for exceptional children's services. And to his right is Sarah Chapman, and she is our assistant director for exceptional children's services. And Sarah had been doing a fantastic job for us as our lead with autism and autistic students and, uh, so great that we were excited to bring her up and have her a part of the leadership team. And I'm gonna hand it right over to Neil to, to get down to business.
Thank you, Dr. Metcalf. So we have a couple of contract amendments that we're putting in front of you on just due to unforeseen circumstances in both cases. We kinda have moving targets with these. We project, but, um, but we do have circumstances that change. Um, the first of which is MGA Home Care, which provides skilled nursing care for six students. Now it is six students, um, with significant medical needs. Uh, we started the year with four students and, uh, through just individual circumstances, that dropped to three and then pretty much throughout the fall, we've, we've moved up from three to six students who require that skilled nursing care, um, that is paid at about, it's paid at $65 an hour through MGA Home Care, um, requiring that contract to increase um, from, from the original amount of 167, um, 167,700 dollars. And, um, sorry, from 320,000, I'm sorry, to 487,700 dollars. The other contract is for All-American Interpret, Interpreters for the Deaf. Um, the reasons for this are kinda twofold. Um, the, the, the executive summary does say that it, there were delayed invoices, but it was one invoice at the end of the year it was delayed due to a hospitalization issue with our contractor who signs the invoices. So we, um, we picked that up with, at the beginning of the fiscal year and obviously that, that money rolled over, but we are having to increase the contract amount for this year for that. And then the other, um, specific, um, cost is a student cost, um, for a student who requires, uh, requires special services through interpreting services through athletics and, um, through driver's ed, um, that we're required to provide. And, uh, that did, um, change that amount, um, increasing it $52,000 to an amount of $182,000. I'll take any questions.
All right, any questions?
I have a question. Uh, yeah, Neil, um, are, uh, do these six students require nursing staff with them all the time?
They do. Yes, it is, it is, uh, it's, it's a beginning to end of day, um, situation where they are. A lot of times we look at, um, students with trachex and just really, uh, significant medical needs that do require that service. It's not a standby issue. I mean, it is.
They're there. Okay.
They're actively, they're providing skilled nursing care, yes.
So do you hire them individually or is it the, the company that sends them?
We do. The MGA Home Care does send them and, and they are, they're in charge of when, when we have issues with, we need a sub, if somebody is out sick or anything like that, they are able to plug staffing in. But they do, um, they vet, background check, all of that and, and have, um, qualified staff that they provide and are, and are great about plugging in.
Okay, do the parents have any say if they don't particularly like a nurse or if they want somebody? Is there any parent involvement in that?
Uh, there absolutely is. I mean, I think, I don't know of a specific situation where we've had that come up, but we're of course open to that and we can have conversations with, we wanna have a good fit for our students and a great fit for the classroom. Fortunate to have that right now. And, um, hopefully that, that status quo continues. But in situations where we would, we would of course.
Yeah, I have to tell you, that's my favorite place to go in all the sc- I have to tell you, that's my favorite place to go in all the schools and you guys do a spectacular job. You really do.
Hearing no other questions? Okay, sir.
Pull out your calculators. So just for clarity, so people who are paying, who are watching, who may not look at the underlying information, the, the second item there is actually, that's not 182,000 for one student, that's adding 53,000 to, for one student, making the total cap 182,000. If you read that, it would read like we're spending 182,000 for one student. We're actually adding 53,000 to an existing contract.
For the second one, we are adding 52,000 to that existing contract, but it does, it goes beyond just that one student. We provide interpreters.
Yeah, no, that's fine. My point is it just, it read, I mean, if you read it, it says providing interpreting services for a student. I, I just want to make sure, no, everyone understands that's not one.
Absolutely.
Okay, so let's go to the MGA Home Care. So what do we pay our, our nurses per hour?
The contract with the MGA Home Care is.
No, 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 I'm sorry. What do we pay our nurses that work for Moore County Schools per hour?
I do not have that number right in front of me. I'd have to do some.
Okay, because the contract rate is 65 dollars an hour. So how many hours per day, or how, how many hours per day do our students go to school? Roughly, well, let's start with how many school days?
We're looking at 185 school days.
185 school days. And how many hours per day?
Seven hours a day.
Seven hours a day. Okay, so, so if you take 400, it says six students. If you take 487,000 and divide it by six, that's 81,283 dollars per student. I mean, that's, that's what it breaks down to. Then if you divide that by the rate of 65 dollars per hour, and I'd like to know, not now, but I'd like to know how much we pay our, the nurses that we hire directly. Because then we can figure out, I mean, do we pay them 40 dollars an hour or do we pay them, you know? So then that's, so if you divide that by 65 dollars an hour, you get 1,250 hours per student, right? And then if you divide that by 185 school days, that's only, my math is, let's see this, divided by 185, that's 6.7 hours per day. Okay, I, I just want to make sure it all added up. So thank you. I didn't, I didn't know the number of days and number of hours. So my only question is what do we pay our, you know, our, the nurses that we hire directly? Thank you.
I have a related question to that one.
Okay.
If, if my colleague wants to make comparisons, comparisons between the contract nurses and our school nurses, I, I would like to know what, what differences there are in qualifications. I assume our school nurses are all RNs. I don't know if that's true of the contract nurses.
I would have to look at that, but I believe it is those, we are, it's not a situation where we have certified nursing assistants. We, we are, we are, we have registered nurses in those positions. Yeah, we absolutely can check that.
I just, I can tell you this, people that I know that are nurses, if they made 81,000 a year and worked 185 days out of the year, that would be quite the payday for them. Now, obviously there's some overhead for the service that provides them, but you know, that, that seems like way above average pay for 185 day work year. You know, a normal work year is 52 times five, 260 days.
Yes, we, we have to consider loaded costs.
Understand, understand. Right, so what I'm asking, what we pay our nurses, you know, I mean, obviously it's whatever we pay them plus the loaded cost, correct? Which is about what?
We serve to share a range out, happy to do that.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item F.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Catching up with myself here.
Yeah, that's okay.
All right, we've got Mrs. Purvis coming up for the next two items. Two roofing repair projects at Northmore High School, bidded separately. I know Ms. Purvis is going to detail the why behind that. And these do come with my recommendation. Mrs. Purvis.
Yes, good afternoon. I will go ahead and preface this with the fact that these are two roofs at Northmore. They will be completed at the same time. We'll go ahead and start on those roofs, but we did bid them separately and not together. The reason for that is that sometimes you have construction companies who provide a better price on one type of roof than another type of roof. So we asked that they give us not their total price for both roofs, but what they were going to charge us individually. We were able to save about a little over 20,000 by bidding these separately. So we will have two separate companies that will complete these jobs. However, we are ensuring that quality is there because as you might remember, we use Trimco, which is a company that provides roofing products and they back their products, their engineers actually check it out, and they provide a warranty. So when we issued these bids, the request for bids, we made sure that the companies who were doing this were going to use only Trimco products and that we would have that warranty. So although we'll have two companies performing the work, we will save some money and we will still have Trimco on both of those roofs, if that makes sense. So the first one that we're looking at is an informal bid for the restoration and repair of building nine at Northmore High School. This is an EPDM roof. It is splitting. It's resulting in frequent leaks and EPDM is kind of a rubber type roof to make that make sense. We had four bids come in. Dry Tech Commercial, 131,374. Fox Hill Construction, 114,048. Galher Management, 143,379. And McCray Roofing, 151,953. The lowest responsive bidder was Fox Hill Construction and they will apply a fully reinforced fluid applied membrane, which will have a 25 year warranty. Staff recommends the contract be awarded to Fox Hill in the amount of 114,048. You'll remember this is the type of roof that we put on at Pinecrest High School and the gym and a few other buildings. We've had great results. I did attach to that the scope of work and it does include a warranty with the preventive maintenance program. So they will come out, Trimco will come out at years two, five, 10, 15, and 20 to check this roof. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Purvis.
Yes, sir.
Where are the two proposed companies located?
I'd have to go back and look. We deal with so many companies, but they have both done work for us before. So we've had Galher and Fox Hill. They're both North Carolina. I'd be, I might tell you wrong if I told you the exact city because we deal with so many.
Okay, but they're, well, North Carolina, these companies. Thank you.
Can you help me identify which building we're talking about?
So you're talking about B building.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Very good. Item G.
All right. The second roof we're looking at, we gathered those bids at the same time and this is the office building at Northmore High School. The membrane on the current roof is broken down. We have patched several places, but we continue to have leaks. This roof is a buildup roof, which means tar and gravel, asphalt and gravel. We have Dry Tech Commercial, 227,540. Fox Hill Construction, 234,080. Galher Management, 225,400. And McCray Roofing, 253,956. The lowest responsive bidder was Galher Management. They will remove the top layer of the buildup roof, which is asphalt and gravel, and replace it with a new top layer of buildup, which will have a 30 year warranty. Staff recommends the contract be awarded to Galher Management in the amount of 225,400. Now you'll notice there's a 30 year warranty here. We had a 25 year warranty on the first one. The reason is because on the first one, they are not removing the roof and putting a new roof on. They are actually applying that fluid membrane, which takes our roof that has some damage and repairs it. So because it is a repair, we get a 25 year warranty. This new roof we're going to take off and put on, we'll get a 30 year warranty with the still preventive maintenance.
Question.
Yes, sir.
What's the duration of work for something like that?
The duration of.
What's the duration of work for the length of the project?
It took us about a week and a half to get the gym at Pinecrest done. So it is, it's not a long process.
Okay, thank you.
And that, these are two that are able to be done during the school year while students are in session, just because of the nature of them. There's no danger for that. They'll come in on the weekend and then maybe finishing up on some school days. We're going to try to get it done during spring break though.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Purvis.
If we're good, we'll keep plowing through. And item H.
Yes, Mrs. Edmonds will come up, Assistant Superintendent for Budget and Finance for this item, and then once we get to it, our first discussion item. But Mrs. Edmonds, each year we bring forward the audit contract for the year ending, the fiscal year ending 2025, as required by law. And of course, we, we have an audit each year, been very satisfied with the audit company we've been using, Anderson, Smith &amp; White, and this is for the recommendation to continue with that based on our RFP we put out a couple of years ago. Ms. Edmonds.
This is based on the North Carolina General Statute 115C 447, where an annual independent audit must be performed for each local school administrative unit. And we must have our accounts audited by a certified public accountant at the close of each fiscal year. The Anderson, the accounting firm, Anderson, Smith &amp; White, was selected as the lowest responsive bidder through an RFP back in 2023. The RFP covers audit services for fiscal year 23, 24, and 25 with an option to add two additional years. The audit fee and financial statement fees for fiscal year 25 total 53,000 plus up to 5,000 in non-test services, which are the mandatory, such as mandatory GASB, statement audits, and general accounting standards board. This represents a $1,000 increase from the fiscal year 24 audit and financial fees. Now you'll notice that we have on the, on there for fiscal year 26 and 27, we have, we have emailed and talked with the auditors to see if they could give us a price for 26 and 27. And they are increasing all of their audits by 3% just for the inflation rate. So the fiscal year 26 total cost would be 54,750, not to exceed the 59,750. And fiscal year 27's cost is 56,500, not to exceed 61,500.
All right, any questions? All right, thank you very much. We're at the last item of number two pending action and discussion, and I would like to ask you for your consensus of each item being on the consent agenda or the action for our regular business meeting on February 10th. So as I call them out, just let me know your wishes. We'll start with A, endorsement to gather public comment. Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah, yeah. So we're good to move that to March, March 3rd. Thank you. B, the course guide, high school course guide, consent agenda.
Action.
All right, item C, approval of the arts education proficiency diploma endorsement, extracurricular activities list. Consent. Action. All right, item D, out of state field trips. Consent. Okay. Item E, amended exceptional children's contracts for services 2024, 2025. Consent. All right. All right, we're on item E, looking for consensus. Mr. Hensley, Mr. Johnson, item E, are we good for consent agenda?
No, it's, it's close. I mean, it, it's close. I mean, by the time, I just wanted to make sure the math got us in the grid square, but it's close. I'm, I'm good with that on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. All right, item F, Northmore High School Roof Repair Restoration, Building Nine. Consent. Item G, Northmore High School Roof Repair Main Office. Consent. And item H, Audit Contract for Year Ending June 30, 2025. Consent. Okay, very good. All right, if everybody's agreeable, we'll take a five minute break and we'll return at 3:15. All right, if everybody's agreeable, we'll take a five-minute break. We'll return at 3:15. All right, we'll bring our, um, work session back to order, and we're at reports, information, and discussion. At this time, we have a couple of items, and Dr. Locklear, if you will guide us through these items.
Yes, ma'am, and we'll, we'll try to move as efficient as we can, knowing we've got a hard stop this afternoon. Um, but this first item, Foundations for Building the FY 25, '26 Budget. Uh, I was very appreciative, uh, Mrs. Edmonds and myself, uh, to present this to our budget committee on January 23rd. Uh, just the draft of this, um, to get their feedback and thoughts. Uh, so with that in mind, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Johnson, who's the Chair of our Budget Committee, and see if he has any comments before Ms. Edmonds, uh, throw it back to her.
Uh, sure, just, uh, just to let the board know that, um, it was, uh, Pauline, David, and myself that were in the Budget Committee. And I felt that it was a really strong committee meeting, and really appreciate Tina and her staff all being there. That was very helpful. Um, and just that I thought it was a really good exchange of ideas, um, with staff and with board members. And I felt very comfortable asking any questions and felt they were very competent in answering the, answering questions we had, so. Uh, without further ado, I'm glad to hear more from Tina on how it looks now.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Uh, Johnson. Uh, yes, so we'll turn it right over to Tina to talk about, um, you know, background foundational information of how our budget is built. Um, and how we've, uh, really from a local perspective are funding our budget this year. And then the unknowns that we certainly, uh, are given as a public school, uh, district. We have a lot of unknowns there, but Tina has some scenarios she'd like to share as well. So I'll just turn it right over to Mrs. Edmonds.
Can you hear me now? Oh, okay. Okay. So this is, this is our Foundations for Building the 25, '26 Budget. We'll start with building the 25, '26 Budget roadmap. We look at our budget essentials. Um, first, we have to consider our current financial landscape. And then we have to look at our 23, '24, the prior year, um, revenue streams and patterns, and the 23, '24 spending analysis. The crucial factors are the impact of fixed costs. We have those state mandated increases in inflation on non-payroll items. Then we have the fiscal year 26 budget planning process. We take a look at our charter school expenditure considerations, impact of staff vacancies, our projected local funding allocation, um, and fixed cost projections. And then finally, the next steps, the pass, the path forward. This is our source of revenues. Um, we have Fund One is our state public school fund. Fund Two is current, uh, local current expense. Fund Three is federal. Fund Four is capital outlay. Fund Five is child nutrition. Fund Eight is restricted revenue. This is our 23, '24's source of revenues. Um, as you can see, our state and local, um, is the biggest portion of our revenues. State being the, the biggest at 61%, local at 23%. You've got federal, um, that is at 6%. Then you have child nutrition and restricted revenue at 4%, and then capital outlay at 1%. And although childcare does show up as a source of revenue, um, it is offset by expenditures for salaries and benefits. This is the 23, '24 expenditures for all funds. Um, as you can see, our salaries and employee benefits, our people, um, were over 80%. Purchased services is another big item, um, and sometimes that can be also personnel that are contracted services. And then we have supplies and materials, and then we have the charter school transfers, and then capital outlay. This is a breakdown of the 23, '24 expenditures by fund, and as you can see in our salaries and benefits, state does pick up that majority. And then local, of course, is second. This chart is provided by DPI. Um, this is the historical per pupil ranking, um, and the rank is between 115 school districts in North Carolina. For 2018, '19, um, we were 108th in our state rank. Our federal rank was 96. Local rank was 32, and our total rank was 95 when you go to 23, '24. Our state rank is at 102, federal rank 104, local rank at 44, and our total rank is now at 109.
And I made this point in committee, I can't resist making it again. Uh, I think it does speak to being 109th out of 115 school districts in funding. Uh, I do think, um, we were able to make that investment go a very long way and make a huge impact being a top 10 school district. So certainly proud of that, uh, but we, at the same time, we would certainly love to see that number be, uh, lower and towards the middle of the state, you would hope.
We'll take a look at the impact of our fixed costs, and we'll start with our state benefit.
If I could comment on that real quickly, uh, and we discussed this briefly in committee. Um, yes, Dr. Locklear is right, we're 107th in, uh, or 102nd in state funding. But that's do, and I'm just explaining this for the public who may not know, that's due to the tier system, where, uh, money is not distributed equally, money from the state is not distributed equally, uh, to the counties. Uh, the state has a tier system and, uh, based of an economic tier system, and based upon where you're at in the tier, uh, you get more or less money. So for example, Hope County next to us gets substantially more state money than we do because we are higher or lower on the tier system. So it's not at all an equitable, uh, uh, dispersion, uh, dispersment of money from the state to the local, um, to the local, um, school districts.
This is the state benefit cost increases from 2022 compared to 25. Um, we are looking at, um, we're, we're looking at the, uh, fiscal year of '22, '23, '24, and '25. Um, for retirement, we were at 22.89%, and in '25, we're at 25.04%. That's an estimated, we are estimating a 1% increase over the 24.04%. Um, from '22 to '25, that retirement would have increased almost 9%. For hospitalization is started out in '22 at $7,019, and then in '25, we are estimating a $300 additional, um, uh, increase per person. This is employer matching for both the retirement rate and the hospitalization rate. It is the employer matching portion. So for hospitalization, um, from '22 to '25, that's a little over 11% increase. Charter school funding, our per pupil funding for charter schools. Um, charter schools do receive funding based on the number of students enrolled. Our local school district support, this funding comes from the local school district where the student resides. This is a legal mandate from General Statute 115(c) to 18.105(c). It does require districts to provide the per pupil local current expense appropriation each year. And this is a historical look of our charter schools, um, over charter school students over the past 10 years. You can see in 2015, '16, we were at 521 total students, and now in '24, '25, we're at 1,440. The biggest charter school that we have in Moore County is Stars. Then we have Academy of Moore, and then in the black, we have Moore Montessori. In the yellow, you will see Other, and Other is composed of several smaller charter schools, um, as far as students, um, with those charter schools. But just one thing to keep in mind, um, one thing to note, prior to '23, '24, our virtual charter schools were not included in the totals because now we do provide the same funding for virtual charter schools as we do our in-person, um, charter schools. This is the total county of Moore public school students. In orange, you have your charter school numbers that were from the previous slide. In blue, you have Moore County schools' numbers. In green, you have our total county of Moore public school students, so it's your charters plus Moore County schools. Back in 2015, '16, we had 13,290 students total. We are now at 14,367 students.
And I think it's always important to note, this is, the local investment from our Board of Commissioners goes to support all 14,387 students per the General Statute that, that Tina was just talking about. And so that investment goes to support all public school students in the county of Moore. The Moore County school students and also public charter school students who reside in Moore County.
Uh, Dr. Locklear, to that point, I've always been disappointed in, uh, when we, you know, that we alone go and advocate to the, uh, county commissioners, uh, for, you know, additional funding which benefits the charter schools. And oddly, the charter schools are never there alongside us representing themselves. I always found that odd. And, you know, I know we've invited them, but they don't show up to advocate for, uh, you know, their own funding. I, you know, I just, it's just odd. We should, we should, I just, I guess we should make sure that we extend that invitation, you know, uh, whenever we appear to advocate for funding.
And that was, I was gonna underline that. I think that we could reach out and make a, make a bigger push to bring them along with us. And I do find that odd because we are funding all those students, um, and the county is responsible for all that, so I agree.
This is a look at how our local costs are being funded in 2025. Um, expenses, we have for certified and classified salaries, $18,299,365. Employer provided benefits at $10,4,257. Purchased services such as utilities, insurance, um, gas, wa- water, phone, property vehicle accident insurance, $5,407,500. Supplies, $3,845,848. And that does include supplies, materials, computer software, fuel for facilities and vehicles, repairs and non-cap computer equipment, and then $415,000 in equipment that is capitalized. And then charter schools at $3,733,000 for a total budgeted expenses of $41,704,475. We have county appropriation, um, it, that includes charter schools at $38,204,595. We have fines and forfeitures plus our interest at $600,000, and our fund balance appropriated is $2,899,880, making our total budget revenues $41,704,475. Now we'll take a look at the budget development. And we have our budget development calendar. January 23rd, we did have our Board Budget Committee meeting, and then today, we have our budget update, um, at the Board Work Session. February 24th to the 25th, we have our Board Two-by-Two meetings to discuss the budget. We have our county work sessions on the county budget, which are still to be determined. March 3rd, we have our Board Work Session to present the Superintendent's Preliminary Proposed Budget. March 10th, we have our, uh, Board Regular Business Meeting with public comments on the Superintendent's Preliminary Proposed Budget. March 14th, we have our Web Portal for, for public comment on the Superintendent's Preliminary Proposed Budget. It opens, and then March 20th through the 21st, we have Two-by-Two Meetings to discuss the budget and any of those, um, public comments. March 31st, we have our Board Work Session. It's the presentation on the Revised Superintendent's Budget. April 7th is our Board Regular Business Meeting where we adopt, the Board adopts the Superintendent's Budget as Moore County Board of Education's budget. May 6th, we have our budget presentation to the county commissioners, and that is a tentative date. May 20th, we have our County Manager Recommended Budget Presentation, which is also a tentative date. June 17th, we have our Budget Public Hearing with the county commissioners. That is also a tentative date. And June 19th is the county commissioners will adopt their budget, their 25, '26 budget is also tentative. And then by October 14th, we have approval of a final school budget, including authorization of state, federal, and local funds with the appropriate budget resolution.
We hope.
We hope.
We hope. We have all the information from the state and federal. That's correct.
So we have challenges with public school budgeting. Public school budgeting relies heavily on accurate proje- projections. Um, however, as seen in the timeline below, several key figures are often determined later than expected, creating significant obstacles for budget planning and resource allocation. And this can lead to difficult decisions regarding staffing programs and overall spending. So with the county funding amounts, it's projected in May, um, but we will not know until June 30th. We do have a funding formula, but it's based on the county's budget, budgeted amounts. So that 38.5% will be determined based on the amount they determine to be their budget. Charter school enrollment numbers are in February. We're estimating it in February. We won't know till the best one of two that comes out in September. Will there be state raises? Will there be benefit rate increases? Um, what are the state funding levels? Will there be state cuts or, or increases? All of those happen. We are projecting in February, um, but we will not know until anywhere from July to November. Um, depends on, um, when the state actually passes their budget. And then projections for charter, for s- projections for students, DPI or Moore County schools. Will we need additional teachers? Will we need to reduce teachers? We do have this new funding and arrears process, um, and it is based on the previous year's attendance, and it does create a lag. Um, it helps. It means that the current year funding is based on past student attendance. Um, so we have to be mindful of that when we are projecting each time, um, but it will change the following year, so we have to keep that in mind. Um, the actual, we have the best one of two, but that's now for the next year because of the new funding and arrears model.
And that's why we received a little more funding this year as a result of growing some of the school district. Uh, because if you do grow past where you were the previous year, you can request additional funding. It's never guaranteed, but you can request it.
So building the budget, a continuation budget. Budget planning should Budget planning should begin with a continuation budget. And this budget outlines the resources required to maintain the current level of services for students and staff in the upcoming year. Key considerations are student population changes, utility rate projections, inflationary impact on non-salary purchases, salary and benefit increases, vacancy forecasting. The continuation budget serves as the foundation for determining the minimum resources needed to maintain current operations. And by starting with a continuation budget, the district can identify areas for potential efficiencies and reductions to achieve cost savings.
And I'll just note that this, as I've been superintendent, the budgets that I've recommended almost have been totally continuation budgets, one in which maintains our current level of services for students and staff, looking at the impact of fixed cost increases in salary and benefits and inflation, and trying to continue to move forward providing the same level of service. With that said, Mrs. Edmonds and I are committed to doing what that last line says. Continue to look for efficiencies, continue to look for reductions where we can find them in, in by looking basically at every line of the budget as we continue to work through and build this budget for the next year to propose to you.
Building the budget with an expansion budget. The expansion budget is where the school board and district leadership outline their additional priorities and initiatives for the upcoming fiscal year. Key considerations are prioritization, cost estimates, staffing impact, and sustainability. The expansion budget allows the district to invest in new programs, services, and initiatives that will enhance the student learning and improve the overall quality of education. It is important to approach the expansion budget with a thoughtful and strategic mindset, ensuring that any new initiatives are well-planned, cost-effective, and aligned with the district's long-term goals.
And just note a couple examples of expansion budget items the boards approved in recent past. One has been school police salary increases has been one example of that. Another has been funds to support school transportation, retention, and recruitment. It's been another example. Another example, you may recall, is an IEP coordinator that we hired for the district. That was another example of expansion budget item that's been part of what the boards pushed in the past. But again, our budgets primarily have been those of continuation. Thank you.
Let me, let me make a comment on that. Dr. Locklear, you and your team have done a really good job in reallocating resources to programs that are effective. You know, it's, I mean, yes, it's a continuation budget and yes, you know, you say, oh, it's unchanged. You know, no, no new major things. But the reality is, within that unchanged budget, you and your team have moved things around to focus on programs that are successful and abandoned stuff that wasn't successful. So although it's a continuation from a 60,000-foot view, your continual reallocation of resources to what's effective is commendable. Not that we always agree, but you know, that's, but it's, it's, you know, anyway.
I'll just make one point also about the continuation budget. One thing that I've been very impressed with, having gone to the first budget 101 and then the committee meetings and having some more discussion is the tools that have been created by the staff to really manage the budget and know the vacancies and do projections, which of course are moving targets. So it's a very courageous thing to do, to make projections at the end of the year like that in a school system this large. But I think that sets a great stage of building trust and transparency with the community. So whereas we have this foundational continuation budget, you know, as we build that trust within the community that we're keeping an eye on things and you guys are reallocating resources, we can then advocate for things like IEP coordinator or other things that might be more of an expansion item. So just want to give shout out to the team about all the tools that they've created to kind of set the stage for this.
Thank you. Tina and her team have done an outstanding job.
So when we look at our initial budget projections, we have charter school projected increase. For fiscal year '24, actual growth is 10 students. As you could have seen on the, as you've seen on the charter school increases for this year, it did increase from '24 to '25, 10 students. The fiscal year '23 actual growth was 138 students. And the five-year growth average is 120 students. Now to keep it very conservative, looking at that five-year growth, we went with 90 students. The per pupil cost is $2,615,000 and we rounded that projected cost to $240,000 increase.
So, yeah, I have a comment too. No, go ahead. No, no, you, okay. I just have a comment. When I was at the School Choice Symposium last Saturday, well, whenever, a week ago, Highlands Charter School has a very aggressive timeline. I don't remember what it is to us. They've partnered with a, with an existing charter school company. And I forget their timeline, but it's very aggressive.
Fall '26.
Fall '26.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I just wasn't sure.
It is aggressive. That's what they call the, I forget exactly what they call it, but it's the aggressive.
It's very aggressive. I mean, good luck getting that paperwork through. I mean, I, you know, best of luck to them. I just, we just gotta keep that in the back of our mind.
I guess what I was looking at is the, the 90 students. I think that's a good conservative number because I did notice that our charter numbers have doubled since the 2015, I think is how far back you went. And ours have just stayed kind of at a level plane. So I appreciate the realisticness of the number you gave us.
I have a question. Oh, sit away. So if I am matching up things we've been told at different times here, the addition of the virtual charters would have been 23. Is that, can you tell me how that relates to the 138, which is above the average 120? Is that why that number is bigger?
It has, it does play a part of that.
And is that part of the reason that you're projecting less, fewer than 120?
Yeah, the five-year average was 120 some of the five years. It was less, it was less than 100 some or more. But on average, it was 120 within the last five years. And I was trying to be conservative rather than saying we needed to increase it by 120 students. Was trying to be realistic because we had increased it quite a bit for the fiscal year '24. And so far, we're looking at, we're looking at the 10 students. So I just wanted to be very conservative.
Hard to predict when you have a five-year average of 120 and then the most recent is 10.
And COVID's in those numbers too. And we saw, we saw the loss of our students, about 7% loss of our students during COVID. And some of that is in that mix, but they bounce right back the next year, but some of that's in that mix.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Tina, I, I might be all off here, but per pupil cost in the charter schools, 2,615, and our per pupil cost is 11,775?
So this is the local money that comes from our county. It is, it is the local appropriation for this year. The local appropriation.
Does not include state and federal.
Correct.
Just the local portion.
Oh, oh, I got you. Okay.
That's correct. Directly to charters.
Okay.
That is correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a look at our estimated impact of vacancies. This is a new way that we're looking at it this year. For, we ran out the numbers and we looked at through December. We took our budgets that are salary-only in these particular PRCs that you see listed. We said, showed what our year-to-date activity was. We looked at any pending budget adjustments. That's what BUDS stands for. And then we have our remaining budget. Then we have our percentage used as of December. Where we should be at December is at 50%. And the difference between what's used and the 50%, that is what you see as the salary savings. You will see in here, utilities is listed. That is not salaries, but I had to include it because if you will look and see 7%, we're in the deficit just for utilities at this point, which means that I do know I'm gonna go over. So I didn't want to quote this huge one, you know, 1.4 million when I know I'm sitting here negative in my utilities. And the reason we're not at the correct rate with utilities, we've only been doing a 5% increase each time. And utilities have went up, over the last couple of years have been higher than five. I think it was one year we didn't do any increase and then a couple of years it's really caught us. So these are estimated one-time savings from vacancies, the $1,190,000. This amount diminishes the portion of the assigned fund balance utilized within the '24, '25 fiscal period. And of course, with our vacancies, these are a moving target because our efforts continue to fill these positions for this year and next. So this year, this week, we may have five vacancies and tomorrow, we may have none. So it changes really on a day-by-day basis. Our local funding formula agreement for '24, '25, we have, our revenues are based on $99,232,714 of budgeted property and sales taxes. The funding formula at 38.5% for this year is $38,204,595. With a 3% increase in funding, we would be looking at an additional $1,146,138 in revenue. A 4% increase would generate $1,528,184. And a 5% increase would be, would generate $1,910,230 in additional revenue from the county.
And before you go on, I would, I would ask everyone to remember that 1.1 million number because the county commissioners have been very adamant at keeping the revenue growth at 3% per year. So that's, we're gonna talk about this in another slide or two. But that 1.1 million is the most likely increase in what we're gonna get during this coming fiscal year. Because, you know, anyway, so just write that down, keep 1.1 million in mind.
Yes, sir. When they were presenting the formula and we were discussing it, they talked about 3% being a conservative estimate of the increase each year. Yes, sir.
This is our projected increases for fiscal year '26 for fixed costs. With the state salary increase scenarios, we are, we have projected a 2% increase in state salaries, a 3% increase, and a 4% increase. Again, conservative, but more realistic as to what we've seen in the past. So with fixed costs associated with projected state increases in salaries, retirement, health insurance contribution rates, and again, with those salaries will be represented by the 2%, 3%, and 4%. The retirement was an additional 1% and the health insurance contribution rate was $300 per person. For certified staff, looking at a step increase and that percentage increase that are locally paid. We're, we, we also were looking at classified staff with a step increase, the percentage that you see, the 2%, 3%, or 4% that are locally paid classified staff. State-paid classified staff, we're looking at step increase only because the state will actually cover the, the percentage. They will not do a step increase because our classified staff, we do have our own salary, our salary schedule where we do, our classified employees do move to the next year. So if you're on year step one, they go to step two the next year if they stay with us. And that is unique to Moore County. Few other school systems like that, but we're fortunate here that the board did approve that. Vacancies is a percentage increase for locally paid employees. So the total fixed costs, with a 2% state salary increase is $830,000. A 3% increase would be $973,000. And a 4% increase would be $1,110,000 for fixed costs. Our local supplement step increases for certified staff, that's your teachers, assistant principals and principals, a 2% increase would be $250,000, 3% at $300,000, and a 4% would be $350,000. All other projected fixed cost increases with a 5% inflation rate for utilities, insurance, supplies, materials, repairs, and fuel and equipment would be $350,000 for a 2%, excuse me, it's 5% across the board. So it's $350,000 in all three scenarios. Projected charter school growth based on that five-year average and rounded up is $240,000 in all three scenarios, making the total fixed cost for a 2% state salary increase, $1,670,000, $1,863,000 with a 3% increase, and $2,500,000 for a 4% state salary increase. Revenues, because we're using that 3% county appropriation funding formula of 3%, is $1,146,138, making our '25, '26 difference between the expenses and the revenue. We would actually have a shortage. We would have more expenses than we would have revenue. So we would have a shortage of $523,862 with a 2% state salary increase, a $716,862 with a 3% increase, and $903,862 with a 4% increase.
So we discussed this slide quite a bit at length in, in the finance committee. And you don't have to remember the 1.1 million dollars because it's right there, the third line from the bottom. When, act a couple of years ago, when the board adopted a, a funding formula with the county and everyone agreed that there needed to be a funding formula, and it was suggested that a funding formula that's tied to the things that, that increase our cost, that idea was, was not approved in favor of a funding formula based upon county revenues. The criticism of having a funding formula based upon county revenues was that, A, it's not tied to what drives our costs. And secondly, the total county revenues with a conservative county commissioners, that they would, you know, everyone's like, oh, we're a growing county. We're a growing county. Look at all the building. Look at the increase in property tax. Look at the increase in sales tax. And, you know, our county commissioners, thankfully, they, rather than take all that extra money, they return the money to the citizens in, in the form of reduced property tax rates so that people on fixed incomes and whatnot weren't priced out of their houses. The net result of having a funding formula not based on what drives our cost, you can see right there, the most likely scenario from the county is a 3% increase, which will be a $1.1 million increase in our funding. And every single line, that causes a deficit. Again, because it's not tied to what drives our, what drives the increase in our costs. And I believe, if I understood correctly, the discussion in the committee is that's actually been the case over the last two years in that we've actually been losing money. We've actually been losing ground with local funding each of the last couple of years. But what happened was the focus was put on total dollars. Look, we got more dollars. We got more dollars. We got, well, that's true. But our expenses increased more than the dollars that we got, but it wasn't allowed to point that out. Anyway, so getting back on point, this is a long-winded way of saying that the finance committee, we're gonna look at the, we're gonna look at the, the last couple of years. And we're gonna look at the funding formula that would have worked for Moore County Schools and would have been revenue-neutral for us so that we wouldn't be having a deficit. So I think that you're gonna find that in the next month or so, we'll be presenting that to the larger, the board at large for consideration. Because we cannot continue, we, we lose money every, every year with local funding. Our hole gets deeper and deeper and we're taking money from fund balance to subsidize that. And again, you can see it right here. Even with the lowest salary increases, you know, we've got a $523,000 deficit. We have to take fund balance. And if the general assembly gives a 4% pay raise, we're a million dollars upside down. And, you know, wow, if they actually catch public employees up to make up for inflation, you know, and give like a 10% raise, which they really should do, you know, that would be, gosh, a $2.5 million deficit. So we're gonna take a look and see if there's a funding formula that ensures that we do not year-to-year lose, lose ground.
And I'll just comment, I definitely support looking, looking at that and I, am I not on? Oh, okay. Sorry. Definitely look forward to that conversation. And I think one thing that we discuss in committee is not necessarily coming back a month with a new proposal to the board, but getting another data point in this budget cycle to then move forward that relationship with the commissioners and talk to them about, about these facts. The other thing that I think would be really important for the board and the community to understand better is, as Mr. Hensley mentioned earlier, is the tier system. I think we have to get, have a good foundational understanding of the tier system and its impacts on Moore County in general and Moore County schools in specific. And so I look forward to, over the next eight, 10 months, really diving into that and getting a better understanding about that as a board.
When we look at fund balance appropriation for 24-25, our fund balance appropriated was 2,899,880 dollars. When you add these projected shortfalls to each of the funding salary, state salary increase scenarios, you're looking at a 25-26 projected fund balance appropriation with a 2% increase of 3,423,742 dollars, 3,616,742 dollars with a 3% state salary increase, and 3,803,742 dollars with a state salary increase, a 4% state salary increase.
Now, Ms. Edmonds, this slide here, I found this very confusing and it was difficult to get my mind around. I understand that the 523,000 dollar shortfall, that's coming from, you know, the previous slide. But this slide also indicates that we're running an additional 2.8 million dollar deficit, 2.9 million dollar deficit, right?
Yes.
And, and that is the deficit that's kind of been systemic, right? We're just kicking that can. And is that growing year to year, that 2.9 million?
Since I've come in, yes.
I'm sorry?
Since I walked in the door, yes. It was 2.7.
It's gone from, over the last, I guess, four budget cycles, from 1.7 million to balance the budget, using local savings to balance the budget, has grown to this current fiscal year of almost 2.9 million. And to your point, each year is a little bigger hole, it's a little deeper hole.
Right.
Because of increased impact costs of the fixed costs. And so that's grown over approximately four years.
So, so the first, again, this is just very confusing, you know, and it's hard to understand. I mean, I, I don't, so the fund balance appropriated, that says we're taking 2.9 million dollars from our existing fund balance.
That's been appropriated in the budget that the board approved, yes, sir, in October. You appropriated almost 2.9 million dollars to balance your budget, your local budget for this year.
Right. So for this coming year?
The one we're operating in right now, we appropriated 2.899 million, yep.
So for next year, we're taking 2.9 million dollars out of the next budget to make a C. So where, so where's a shell game? That's, that's what's hard to understand, is where, where is that 2.9 million coming from?
Tina will walk through in the next couple of slides a little more about that. It might be the next slide.
Here, here's my concern. Let me say my bottom line, how deep is that well? I mean, when is the pond going to go dry? There's not an unlimited pond to take 2 million dollars a year from. Or is that pond refilling? Where, where's the rainwater refilling that pond?
The, the rainwater that's refilled that pond has been vacancies for the most part, that we've been able to reinvest into the next year's budget. So to your analogy, the rainwater's been the fact that we haven't been fully staffed in a few years.
Right. But the, but if you go back a couple of slides for this year, the projected vacancies are only one, for this budget, we're only projecting 1.1 million dollars in, in vacancies. So right there, the pond is, the pond is dry. I mean, we, we just, it, it, we're living on borrowed time.
Don't disagree that we do need to address, how can we get increased funding as we move forward in the future? You know, to our discussion in Budget Committee, I'm very grateful for the Board of Commissioners over the last three years. They have invested significantly more in Moore County schools and the funding formula did get us additional revenue that we weren't getting before. The, to go back to your content, your, your earlier thought, it, it basically, that 2.9 million is the hole you start in as you go to the next budget. And then that 500-something thousand with a 2% increase is the additional hole. It's additional depth of the hole that you have to assign to balance the budget. So that's what that slide's trying to indicate.
Is it fair to say, is it fair to say that we're borrowing against a future year? Is that a fair way to, so that people can, what's a good way to conceptualize that 2.9 million dollars? So just, you, people can just understand?
You're borrowing against your family savings account to balance your budget. So that, that rainy day fund or savings account that you have as a family, you're borrowing against that to balance your budget. Because we're required to have a balanced budget. And for, because of vacancies and other savings that we might be able to apply from the state budget, we're able to add, we've been able to add a little bit to fund balance every year and not spend all that appropriated fund balance. So that's allowed us to have that last for several years. I share your concern that that can't go on forever.
Aren't we required by the state to have a savings account as well?
Well, that's, local governments are required, are recommended to have a certain percentage of their savings account. By board resolution, you've, you've said that you will keep at least 2 million dollars in your local fund to fund balance for cash flow purposes. If we were to move forward with this, with these numbers and what we're projecting, the board may have to waive that next year. Which Tina will show a couple of scenarios with that.
So this is our projected local budget for 20, fiscal year 26. The first in red is your 24-25 budget, the 41,704,475 dollars in expenses. And then the county appropriation of 38,204,595, budgeted fines and forfeitures plus interest of 600,000 and that 2,899,880 in fund balance to balance your budget. So then with the 25-26 budget scenarios, a 2% increase. When we pull over that new projected fund balance appropriation of 3,423,742 dollars increase, just showing you what the budget would look like, we are now at 43,374,475 dollars. A 3% increase brings us to 43,567,475 dollars with a fund balance appropriation of 3,616,742 dollars. You would have a total budget of 43,754,475 with a 4% increase. And our fund balance appropriated will be 3,803,742 dollars. To look at our local fund balance for fiscal year 26. We had fund balance as of June 30th, 2024 at 5,386,938 dollars. We have assigned fund balance for inventories and stabilization of 466,683 dollars. We have assigned fund balance for fiscal year 23-24 of 2,899,880 dollars. And we have unassigned fund balance for this year of 2,023,75 dollars, just slightly above that 2 million floor. Now, when we're using the projection for fund balance for June 30th, 2025, this is different than what I presented at last month's work session. And I'll show you what I did present at last month's work session. But between last month and this month, we have received notification of a DPI discrepancy with their allotments. And the allot, the allotment for positions and those positions, I actually use that in my, my projections. So I'm back and forth with the email with DPI, this is what, this is a, my scenario based on our data. I am projecting a projected fund balance as of June 30th, 2025 with a 2% increase of 5, 5,216,921 dollars. You would have that projected fund balance appropriation for 25-26 of 3,423,742, leaving you a projected unassigned fund balance for 25-26 of 1,793,179. With a 3% state increase, it would, your fund balance would go down to 1,600,179 dollars. And with a 4% increase would be 1,413,179 dollars. And as Dr. Locklear said, all three of those scenarios are below the 2 million floor. Now, this is the version that I did bring to you at last month's board work session with DPI's numbers. The projected fund balance for June 30th is 6,498,720. Fund balance appropriated for fiscal year 25-26 was 3,423,742, leaving you a projected unassigned fund balance for 25-26 of 3,074,978. A 3% increase would leave you a fund balance, projected fund balance of 2,881,978 dollars. And a 4% increase would leave you a projected unassigned fund balance of 2,694,978. And all three of those scenarios are above the 2 million floor. And really, the, the projected fund balance, that is a, that is a moving number. So every month, when I'm bringing you budget amendments, that number's changing. So when this gets brought back to you in the superintendent's proposed budget, you'll see that number's changing based on projections as well.
So the next steps as we move forward is to continue to get your feedback, thoughts and questions as we move forward in the process. We also hope to have additional data or intel from the state legislature over some projections of where their budgets are coming in by the time we're meeting with you later in, later this month. But again, this reminder of the budget development calendar, we're sharing foundational information with you today and then taking through the two-by-two meetings all the way through your approval of the budget, us presenting to the county commissioners and then their approval towards the end of June. Things that we have to continue to consider as we move forward, again, going back to that idea of the continuation budget. Certainly maintaining our commitment to physical responsibility. Making sure that we are doing all we can to continue the current level of services we're providing for our students and our staff. But also, as I noted, Ms. Edmonds and I were going to continue to, as I might call it, scrub the budget to try to find as many efficiencies and savings that we can to reduce how much additional fund balance we might have to sign. Obviously, if there is desire on the board to talk about some enhancements, some additional things we might want to add to the budget, we certainly can have those discussions and those can be driven at those additional discussions that we'll be having and as we finalize the budget. And as always, when we're looking at those options, we want to be as exacting as we can with our projections and our scenarios. And through all this, we'll continue to get stakeholder input. That's part of that online portal that we put out there, the board will approve at your work session next month. After I present the preliminary budget, I'll ask you also at that day to approve us opening up a portal. And we'll have that run to, for two full weeks for the public to weigh in. So with that, we're open to any additional discussion, questions, or feedback you'd like to give Ms. Edmonds and myself as we continue to develop this.
Ms. Edmonds, would you go back way toward the beginning where we look at our rankings of funding just one more time? I just want to point that out. Over the years, I mean, we're 108th out of 115 school districts. Oh, excuse me, 109. And, you know, the quality that our school district provides at that ranking, I just would really like to get to that middle of the road pack where, you know, we're funded equitably. We need to make sure that our people have what they need, we need to make sure we balance our budget. And I feel like there's room for improvement with that. That means talking and communicating and educating about how we're funded. And we need support from our community for those conversations.
Let me say this in, in response, is the, the county could, could double the amount of funding they provide. And I'm not sure that that would, the, the state funding is such a large part and the federal funding is such a large part. You know, let's say you do a 50% increase in county funding. You know, I'm not sure how far that moves us up the rankings. The second thing that I would say is whether it's, you know, I mean, study after study. I mean, the, the worst school districts in the nation have the best funding in the nation. You know, Washington DC comes to mind, Chicago comes to mind. You know, there was, there was a, a chart that came out, 30 public schools in Chicago have no students at grade level proficiency. 30 schools in Chicago, or I'm sorry, in Illinois. And when I read that chart, every single one of those schools had twice the per pupil funding or more than Moore County schools. So there's not a correlation between more funding and much better, I mean, can we use more resources? Yes, of course. And, you know, do we need to at least make sure that our, our local funding, you know, keeps us even where we're at? But, you know, to, to expect local funding to make up for shortfalls in state-provided funding is just not, it's a real, unrealistic burden to put on the taxpayers of Moore County. You know, when the flaws at the federal and state-level formulas.
We just have to make sure we balance our budget.
Well, yeah, yeah. Look, I'm not saying we have a problem, I pointed it out. I'm just saying we need to set expectations accordingly that the, the county taxpayer cannot make up for the huge deficit that we don't get from the state because of the tier system.
And I also think they get an amazing bang for their buck. I mean, our results, we're 10th in the state of North Carolina.
Well, I think, you know, I think that we, we need to, we need to advertise that. We need to tell everybody, you know, there, there are people who are skeptical and, and come asking, is Moore County schools being responsible with, with their taxpayer money? And I think the fact that we're 109th out of 115 for funding and we're top 10 for results tells you something about how carefully we're using that money. And I also want to say kudos to Ms. Edmonds and Dr. Locklear and the team. And if any members of the public are, are watching the tape of this meeting, if you go back to, you know, you just heard Ms. Edmonds present all of these things that we don't know, that we're having to project based on guesses and we're not going to know for months what those actual values are. And we have the responsibility for balancing the budget and she does that. And a couple of months ago, we had our audit report and it was very, very boring. They said we went over this aspect of things with a fine-tooth comb and we didn't find a thing wrong. And we went over that aspect of things with a fine-tooth comb and we didn't find anything wrong. So people who want to know about Moore County schools' stewardship of taxpayer money, you know, there's a lot of good information here and I think we're doing well.
I just had one final thing, is that I totally agree with that sentiment. I think the underlying assumption of the tier system is that the state is not going to provide the wealthier counties more money because there's an assumption that the counties will, will make up the difference. And that's just the, that's basically the tier system in a nutshell. The last thing I'll say is, the goal, the, the board has started working on strategic goals around retention and recruitment and, and enhancing that. And if we're successful in those goals, that hole gets a lot bigger. And so I just want to put that out there, that those things are interestingly aligned.
Well, so, so that's a good point, right? There, there are things that we as a board need to do, locality pay is one, you know, and there are some other things that we could improve given funding. But that's a flaw in the existing funding formula. Because if everyone remembers correctly, the existing fu, funding formula was 38.5% and that's it. You work it out. That was the deal, 38.5% and that's it, you work it out. Don't come back for more, except for capital spending, right? The correct funding formula should be a funding formula that keeps us exactly even. And then if we want to expand, for example, we want to increase our locality pay or we want to do something else operationally, then we go to the county commissioners and we say, hey, look, we would like to increase our locality pay, that's going to cost an additional, I'm making this up, 2 million dollars a year. So add that to the baseline, we do a new baseline and then that increases at what drives our expense. So part, part of what made the previous deal bad for us was, and that's it. And no one paid attention to, and that's it. Because it should have been, and then you can come back and let us know if you want to do something else. But that's not what the board agreed to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edmonds.
We're at item B.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. This is an item that was added to the agenda at the request of Board Member Hensley. But I know there's other board members who had interest in discussing. but I know there's other board members who had interest in discussing the potential option of K-8 related to the replacement of Carthage Elementary School. We know that later this evening, we have a public hearings scheduled to give feedback on my recommendation with the consensus support of the construction committee of building a new Carthage Elementary on a new site to a core capacity of 600. But this specifically is to discuss a little more about opening a K-8 related to the replacement of Carthage Elementary and what that impact would be based on replacing an existing K-5 where we also have an existing middle school that's servicing the Carthage community. So this is really just a little bit of information from a business perspective when we look at the business side, the cost side of this, and why it wouldn't be my current recommendation that we would pursue this. But I'll let Ms. Purvis share and then open to discussion and questions from the board. Ms. Purvis?
Thank you, sir. So as you guys know, we currently have two K-8 schools within our district at High Falls and Westmore. High Falls serves about 275 students and Westmore about 260, and they each serve a great purpose. They're located in areas of geographical nature that travel for many miles, but the population is sparse, and that population is not growing. So thus the reason we have those K-8 schools in those areas. Now, there are some districts around the state who are building K-8s, and when you see that, the majority of the time, it's because they're consolidating two or three old schools that have declining enrollment, and they're taking those old schools and consolidating them into one K-8 for increased efficiency, or in other words, saving operating dollars. Although we certainly appreciate the role K-8 serves, there's a few reasons in this instance, it just may not be appropriate for replacing Carthage Elementary. First of all, a K-8 replacement for Carthage would be really large. We'd start out with 600 or 700 students from the onset. We would then need to take into consideration that as we're building Carthage, we're looking towards 10 years. So the capacity that we are going to have in 10 years, we need to make sure is there. So that's why we were building the core out to six, but maybe only classrooms to 450. If this were to be a K-8, the core would need to be built out to 800. So when we're looking 10 years down the road, this K-8 school would be a K-8 school with 800 students. Also, when we think about trying to be really fiscally responsible with taxpayer money, then the first thing we want to do is always take a look at how to utilize the capacity we have. Currently, we have students at Cranes Creek. We have 150 empty seats there. If we were to open Carthage as a K-8, then the Carthage Elementary students would no longer feed into New Century. If that happens, then we have approximately 300 empty seats then left at New Century. So by building a K-8 for Carthage, what we would do is then have approximately 300 empty seats sitting at New Century and 150 seats sitting already at Cranes Creek. So we'd be opening a new middle school while we'd leave 450 empty middle school seats already there. So when we think about taxpayer money and fiscal responsibility, we always try to look at it from the standpoint of how can we use the capacity we already have and not build additional capacity, which is one of the reasons we wanted to make sure when we built this Carthage that we had room for capacity. We know Sand Hills Farm Life and Bass may grow. We wanted to make sure if we're being really responsible, that we could move some of those students here in the future instead of building this and then having to add on to another school and another school. So thinking about that, we know we'd leave those seats empty. Also, as we've shared, to build a new Carthage Elementary, a K-5, we're going to need about 20 to 25 usable acres to put that school on. If we build a K-8, we're going to need 40 to 45 acres. So we're doubling the amount of land that we're going to have to purchase. The reason for that is when we build a K-8, then of course, we have athletics. So we have all the additional acreage that would come with a football field and a softball and tennis courts and all of that. The cost of not only the land would go up, but the build itself because we would have additional square footage that was needed. And then we have to take into consideration and think about the fact that New Century was built in 1997. That's a longstanding school culture that we would be separating. So, you know, almost 30 years, 28 years of a school culture. So those are the reasons when we look at it as a whole, that for this particular instance, the recommendation would not be a K-8, while we certainly understand and appreciate that K-8s are sometimes the best option, as they are at High Falls and Westmore right now.
Real quick, so the reason I suggested to the chair and the superintendent that this be put on the agenda, not that it wasn't because I was for it or against it, but I knew that there were several board members who this was a question in their mind. And what I was hoping was that there would be a discussion among the board now because there's a public hearing in one hour and four minutes, by the way, so that, you know, to lessen confusion at the public hearing. So that, you know, look, if board members decide, yes, we want to propose this, okay, that's okay. Or if we just say, oh, okay, never mind, then, you know, one way or another, we need clarity going into the public hearing. Here's my personal thoughts, right? And I understood exactly what Ms. Purvis said. I think that in my... Well, it goes, you know, I'm going to say it's a flaw in our planning process that these things pop up in the last minute, but I think, you know, there was early on, there was discussion about small community schools. And in my mind, and I think in most people's mind, that was, you know, smaller, like a 300-seat elementary school v. a 700-seat elementary school. But in the minds of other people, and it's valid, right? But that smaller community school was interpreted as K through 8, not just a physically smaller school. So I think that's the discussion. That's why I asked for it to be put here, so we'd have this discussion. And, look, do we want a large factory K through 8? Or do we want a smaller community school? Or do we want a large elementary school?
So it's just to get everyone on the same sheet of music and facilitate the public hearing.
Can you go ahead and also make a point, comments?
A very short comment, I'm sorry, on the word "large." I think 450 is right around our median of elementary school size, isn't it?
Yes, we have, if you do the median.
Yeah, the reason why I really wanted this, to talk about it, because I just wanted the people of Carthage to have, to know everything. Everything that was on the board. They weren't being just being shoved down their... I don't know what I'm starting to say. Anyway, I wanted the people to have knowledge of everything that they could possibly have. And I never agree with the pilot, but there's what the pilot says. "Weigh all visions for Carthage School." And that's exactly what I wanted for the people of Carthage, just to know that there are other options besides just having an elementary school. And that's all I wanted. And I think that that's very fair to present them with everything. And Carthage used to be a K through 8 school. Does anybody know why it stopped being a K through 8 school?
Because they opened New Century.
Is that why?
Yeah, they had a fill in New Century.
When was Carthage built?
1950.
So, you know, you got to keep in mind, in 1950, there were probably, no kidding, seven or eight school districts in Moore County. Southern Pines and Pinehurst had their own school districts until integration. Pinecrest High School, which was built 60s, late 60s? Pinecrest High School was built specifically to dissolve two remaining segregated school districts and do final integration of our schools. So a lot of these schools, some of these schools used to be, you know, first through 12.
Well, Carthage was originally a high school. So, you know, every, it's moved on, but I know my father-in-law, I think, graduated from it as a high school.
Yeah, suffice to say, there's been a lot of changes over the years, and buildings have been repurposed.
But I really appreciate you putting it on here just for us to talk about. And I think it should be presented to the people of Carthage, too. I think everything should be on the table.
May I add something?
Yeah.
Clearly, the dollar figure is key. There's no question there. But from a teaching and academic dynamics perspective, you got to look back. Back in the 70s, they instituted middle schools to relieve overcrowding. So what used to be a K through 8 string of continuity and teaching and learning was broken at a kind of a critical juncture in a kid's life, 10-years-old, and shunted over to a new environment. That new environment didn't add anything to the existing curriculum. This was not an enhancement to teaching and learning. This was a place that we sent kids to. And it just became, through the 90s, I think there were 12,000 middle schools in play. Some Harvard studies have shown that kids have suffered some real setbacks and speed bumps, if you will, in that transition from the K through 5 model to the middle school model. Some of them have taken up to a year to try to recover. So I guess from a performance perspective, and add into that the great logistical burden added to families by now. If you've got two kids, suddenly, you've been contending with trying to keep up with one logistical leg, and now you've got a second to contend with. And that was really brought to my attention during our appeals committees, to see how many parents are struggling to try to maintain a family life and trying to get the kids to the school at the right time. So I would suggest we take a hard look at the benefits of a K through 9 format in terms of teaching and learning, continuity and consistency. Thank you.
One other comment. My concern is keeping cohorts of students together. And if you look at our current school reassignment plan, Southern Pines Elementary and Pinehurst Elementary, that cohort is split. 50% goes to, 50% go to different elementary schools. So in my mind, the key is, you know, you keep, we keep the elementary, middle, and high school, but the next time we do a school reassignment plan, we have got to keep a priority on keeping cohorts together. In other words, the physical building doesn't matter. It's the cohort stays together.
I would like to respond to what Mr. Benway said. I, you know, don't argue that there could be setbacks for kids making a huge change going from 5th to 6th grade. But I would just also point out that there's a cultural difference between elementary school and middle school. Middle school has, you know, what is the need for all this acreage? It's because they have sports. You know, they now have band. They have a lot of other activities that are going on on the campus, bringing traffic, and that is kind of a different culture than elementary school. I also did some reading of studies on, you know, comparing K-8 models to traditional elementary, middle, high school models. And what I found was a lot of people saying that having the bigger kids there had an impact on the younger kids and on the teachers of the younger kids that was, in some cases, they felt it was a significant stressor. So I would say that, you know, there might be some benefits to one, but also some drawbacks.
I would say to go with Mr. Hensley's not wanting to plan poorly, but also not wanting to overburden herself or not knowing... I wasn't here when we did redistricting before. I don't know if that goes on a certain calendar of events or if it's as needed, but possibly we need to align redistricting with the opening of Carthage. Thoughts on that?
Currently, if we were to build a K-8 as the recommendation, I mean, a K-5 as the recommendation is, we would not need to redistrict because currently, those students that are at Carthage would just go to the new elementary school. The redistricting would need to happen if we were to have overcrowding in the other schools within Area 1, such as Bass or Farm Life.
That's what I'm getting at.
And we had to have that cascading effect. At that point, we would have to take a look at it. That would be probably a few years down the road, but certainly something that's the reason we are preparing for a core of 600. So that can happen.
Okay.
But at the onset of the opening of Carthage Elementary, we would be opening with 450 seats available, and we have about 340 students there. So we'd move them over and still have a few extra seats for immediate growth that would happen within that already districted area, if that makes sense.
It does, yes, ma'am.
I just appreciate all of the conversation and the thoughtfulness of our board. I want to add that our district team has done a lot of work. This has been going on since 2021. I would also like to remind that a lot of the conversations from the Carthage community, and I know it wasn't everybody, but we're getting ready to hear from a lot of people today, that they did not want the K-8 model, that they did want a new school at a new site. I also support following the superintendent's recommendation on that. As a former middle school principal, and my daughter was one of the first sixth graders at New Century, Mr. Benway, I just really believe in the middle school model to help transition our elementary students to the high school. I was at the high school for 20 years, and so I witnessed that myself. They are providing leadership opportunities, the sports, the arts. A lot of my middle school students took high school courses. It's just a new and more, I think, effective way of bridging that transition from elementary with that culture of an elementary school to the high school. And so I really applaud the middle school model. I can say, because I lived it, my children lived it, that it's very effective, and it made their work at the high school level even greater because they were prepared for the high school, and that's one of the purposes for the middle school. It's also years of transition for our adolescent students. And, you know, I honestly could not see my five-year-old granddaughter on a school bus with an eighth-grade boy, you know, going in that same community. So that is another worry from a grandmother's and, you know, mom's point of view. But I really do appreciate your conversation and your thoughts for all of these topics. So I look forward to hearing from the public in just a little bit.
If I may, Madam Chair, I just want to kind of restate what I opened with in a different way. I think K-8 model can be a viable model in the right situation. I just don't believe this is the right situation based on, you know, based on the replacement of a current K-5. We already have a middle school that serves the Carthage community. I just don't think it would make viable sense from a business sense to do that. But there may be a situation coming in the future where it would make sense to consolidate, you know, into a K-8 in a situation. So I'm not against the K-8 model. I want to be clear about that. I think it serves a great purpose in education, and districts have it around the nation. But also, I just don't think it's the right path in this situation, which is why it didn't get explored a little further in the construction committee.
I'm going to put a bid in for Robbins, at least.
Well, that can be discussed in the future, but you might want to hear from the Northern Moore community as well on that one, as well. But, and I would just note, too, that if the board did decide to add this to the purpose this evening, they would have to make a motion to do so.
Wait, wait, wait. Oh, sorry. You're on... So does this mean you are not going to present it to the people of Carthage?
If you make a motion as a board and add it to the purpose of the public hearing, yes, ma'am.
I'm going to make a motion just because I think that the people need to make their own decisions.
And if the board approves that, we'll certainly share what Ms. Purvis shared right now and then let the public comment on that.
Okay, so how do I word this? I want to make a motion... I want to make a motion to include the K eight. All options, I want all options on the on the on the board.
Okay.
To be presented to the people of Carthage.
All right. You would do that during that time period, right? Or now?
No, we we do it right now, I think, for our agenda, yeah. To add it to the public hearing.
I would.
Am I correct?
Can we be more specific in the motion?
So your motion is to add the K eight option or other options if they'd like to, if they'd like to bring that up at our scheduled public hearing at five thirty today. And Mr. Benway had a second. Do we have any discussion?
I do. I'm going to vote for this, not because I'm enamored with the K through eight model, but I'm going to vote for this because I believe any effective planning process presents options to the stakeholders, whether the stakeholders are the county commissioners or the public. To present one option for discussion isn't a decision-making process. That's, you know, kind of, th- these are harsh terms, but it's a take it or leave it. So I believe that a planning process should present options for consideration.
I I think we need to define what we're going to present a little bit. We have information on K eight that which Ms. Purvis has just shared with us. We have the superintendent's recommendation for a new elementary school with core capacity six hundred to be constructed on a new site. Did I get that right?
Yes, ma'am.
But all other, we don't have a presentation prepared to provide the public context on other options than that. So how do we give the public comparable information on other options?
I would my only response to that is Ms. Purvis's background presentation on the the current recommendation that I that I brought based on the board, the board's work of that point, does provide some context as to the challenges the site brings, the seven-acre site brings, why we got to the point of of recommending a new site to build a new elementary. So there's some of that context back there, someone if someone is coming to the hearing to say, I want you to renovate on the site. Well, there is some context, at least, that Ms. Purvis were offering her background presentation that will give them a little information as to why that wasn't the the recommendation. But they certainly can advocate for that, for example. But you're right, all others is kind of wide open, and I guess that would be up to the public, I don't know.
Well, maybe the public could give us some really good ideas.
What?
Part of the reason they're here, isn't it?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, any other? Okay, we ready to vote? All right. So the motion on the floor is to add K eight option and to gather input from our public about what they might like. And so if you vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Nay. So it's five to two. Passed. So motion passes. All right, I just want to pause right here to say that we're getting close to the five o'clock hour, and I would like for us to have one more Item C, and then we may need a motion to move the last items to our March third work session. So do we feel like we can get that in about twenty minutes with board comments?
Yes, Ms.
Yes.
Ms. Sinins and Ms. Gebhardt's presentation is brief. This is at the request of Mr. Benway, just to have some overview of our summer reading camp, a little data there, so I'll turn it right over to them, keeping in mind our time constraints, Ms. Sinin and Ms. Gebhardt, because you know Ms. Gebhardt get fired up, just like I can about this work. So just keep it, keep that in mind as you're sharing your presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I can talk really fast. All right, so there was a request for us to share some information about the Read to Achieve Summer Camp, so we'll go ahead and start right away with Senate Bill three eighty-seven. This Senate Bill three eighty-seven outlines the requirements for literacy to include our reading camps. Part of that is literacy intervention plan that has to be developed, and that's a district plan for how literacy is going to be taught and how we're going to intervene when there's some additional help that our students need. It also includes individual reading plans for students and outlines what those are supposed to look like and what needs to be in there. It follows the state assessment for reading, and Ms. Gebhardt's going to share that information, and then the reading camps as well. So the first thing that we want to share is just around the good cause exemption. So third grade, it's all around third grade proficiency and how students show proficiency in third grade reading. So there's five different pathways that are the good cause exemptions. So if you look at number one, that's your limited English proficient students with less than two years of instruction and an English as a second language program. That would be an exemption. So if we have students that fall into that category, that would be an exemption for them. Students with disabilities receiving IEP goals. So when we look at students' IEPs, what they're receiving for I for their goals for reading, that can be considered a good cause exemption as well. Number five goes to students who have been retained twice before third grade. So any if we have for any reason, we have a student that's been held back or retained in other grade levels prior to third grade two times, then that would be a good cause exemption. The other two things, I skipped three and four, but those are about different different pathways, different ways that they can show proficiency. So students who demonstrate reading proficiency with a score of seven twenty-five Lexile on M class, and I know Ms. Gebhardt has shared before about M class, and that's one of the assessment tools that we use for ELA. And then also students who demonstrate proficiency through a reading portfolio. So third grade teachers have a reading portfolio requirement that they do throughout the school year, where students can show those proficiency on those different standards. So for reading camp, these are some of the requirements that we wanted to share. As you'll see, we're required to offer to second and third grade students demonstrating difficulty with reading development. So we have a requirement to offer it. It doesn't mean that they are required to attend or that they have to attend, but we are required to offer it. We also have to have seventy-two hours of literacy instruction. So as the calendar has developed, and Donna's going to talk a little bit more about that, when the calendar has developed of how that is going to play out for reading camp, there has to be seventy-two hours of literacy instruction. Senate Bill three eighty-seven states within the law that parents make the final decision. So we can offer it to those second and third grade students that would qualify. However, the parents are the ones that will make the determination about whether or not their child is going to attend camp.
May I interrupt you real quickly?
Of course.
At that point, do we provide transportation or am I getting ahead of it?
Yes.
That's just I wanted to be that to be clear that we do provide transportation for the reading camps. Thank you.
So jumping into the required reading camps, we have seventy-two seventy-two hours of reading instruction. We typically do that over four weeks. We try to do two weeks in June, the week of July fourth off, and two weeks in July. We taught, we do the four-day weeks, which means our teachers come from seven until twelve-thirty, our students come seven-thirty till twelve. We provide them with a snack and a breakfast. They are off-site for lunch, so again, that's a little bit of a cost savings. We typically choose five generally located sites and try to pair the schools so that my goal is never for these students to be on the bus longer than forty-five minutes to an hour in the summer. So we we try to wo- work with our transportation department to really look at what sites we have the students and how long would be the longest transportation route. So you'll see last year, we have the five sites, Aberdeen, and then Aberdeen and Pinehurst went to that site. It'll be similar this year. It might be instead of Cameron, we might be back at Bass. So we will typically try to run five sites. We have to pay for the teachers, we have to pay buses and bus transportation cost and drivers, we have to have materials and breakfast and snack. Luckily, working with our food and nutritious, we all nutrition, we only had to provide snack and breakfast for one site because she got our other sites waived due to the students who were attending were free and reduced lunch students, so we were able to not have to pay that cost at those at four of those sites. We typically get, last year, we got a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So you'll hear me talk about PR O sixteen is to support your reading camps, is to support support those costs. This year, we'll get about a hundred and forty thousand for our reading camp, a little bit more, and we we work diligently to operate within that budget and still provide our camp for our students, having lower class sizes so that we have a lot of reading. You heard Ms. Sinin mention the individual reading plans. We spend time continuing on the portfolio, on individualized reading plans, and really trying to close those gaps for those students. It's hard to compare last year's data to the year before. I did make a note in there, in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, we had three hundred and ninety-four students invited. We had about a hundred and twenty attend the first two weeks and then about ninety attend the last two weeks. However, the year before, we can't compare because the year before, we had RTA students and our low-performing school students. So when you're looking at, we invited three hundred and thirty-five RTA students and three hundred and thirty-one one, uh, low-performing students. So around twenty, two hundred and fifty students attended the first two weeks, around two hundred and twenty-five. Over the last couple of years, I've sort of monitored attendance, and we get about thirty to thirty-five percent of our students attending on a on a regular basis from the the data that we've gotten over the last four years. We do get the opportunity, and this is why summer school is so important, our read our Read to Achieve camps are so important. Students can become proficient over the summer. So last year, we were very fortunate. We had a lot of kids with some great portfolios and a lot of, we're now seeing the interventions that we're using start closing that gap. You'll see last year, we had just from camp alone, twenty students identified as reading proficient. The year before, we had ten students. Throughout the year, though, we are able to continue to work with M class and determine and and try to close those gaps so that we have students that are reading proficient throughout the year with M class or the portfolio. We typically will add by the November first deadline that the legislators give us anywhere from seven to ten more kids throughout that time period. This is our data for the last four years, looking at EOG and good causes. So when when we look at last year, twenty-three, twenty-four, we had ninety-point-three percent of our third graders proficient. That includes all of those good causes. So we had eighty, and I'm going to break it down to, we had eighty-nine students who were reading, who were reading retained due to not having and not being able to pass one of those multiple ways to demonstrate reading proficiency. There is, each year, you'll see ninety-one percent. I'm not going to be happy till I have at least a hundred percent or at least ninety-five or higher, but I do think that with what we're putting in place, I think we're starting to see that our students, the year before, we had ninety-one not reading, not reading proficient. So again, I'm hoping that that decrease continues to go down. If you'll go to the next slide, though, you'll see. So the question is that often we hear is what happens when a student is, does it become proficient over reading camp? Well, they are placed in what's called a transition three-four class. What that means in our terms is our phenomenal teachers are working on third grade standards and skills, whatever that deficit is that that student has, they continue to work on those skills as outlined in that individualized reading plan, whether it's Donna needs help in fluency or Donna needs help in decoding. They continue to work on that. They continue to work on their portfolio. They also continue to be assessed with M class so we can really diagnose what are those needs of those students and where can we fill those gaps. They will also take a Read to Achieve assessment in October, and that that way, they're hopefully they're hopefully able to demonstrate proficiency on those on those third grade standards. In addition, we make sure we have communication with our parents monthly, and that individualized reading plan guides all instruction. The PLTs are talking about what we're doing for our students who have not yet demonstrated reading proficiency and how do we make sure we're doing the right things within that MTSS process, that reading intervention plan and closing that gap. I want to say a huge shout out of some things that we have done, and this is through, thankfully for you guys as a board, I first want to say just the IREDDI assessment and monitoring. Having that program gives our teachers a tool in their tool belt to help close those reading gaps. It gives our kids constant practice in reading, just like I I use the sports analogy, you don't go out here tomorrow and run the run the marathon when you've only run a mile before. So we we that that program helps us have that reading practice. You also have approved for us to purchase the Rewards Fluency and Vocabulary Intervention Program for our fourth and fifth grade students. That we're having a lot of, and and even into our middle school, we're having a lot of success with that program. And we also have the Core Ninety-Five Intervention Program. So we have a strong core program of ninety-five percent core phonics that all of our K-three students get, and now we have the intervention pieces. So this is just, again, in our intervention, in our individualized reading plan, we target whatever that kid needs very specifically. We'll be glad to answer any questions.
Donna.
Yes, ma'am.
You said that you were bringing the students from your low-performing schools on twenty-two, twenty-three. Why did you stop that for twenty-three, twenty-four?
We ran out of ESTER funds. So the only funding we had for last year was my RTA O sixteen funds. And that did not allow for any other, any other opportunities for summer school.
Okay, well, I'll tell you, Ken, Ken and I went to, we went to visit one of the summer camps. It was absolutely phenomenal what they were doing with those kids. It was amazing. I I don't know how anybody could come at the end of the summer and not be reading proficient. It was one of the best classes I have ever attended, so.
Our teachers are phenomenal. They give up that time, they're passionate, I will say. They spend that time to and really.
Really, really good.
Provide really good lessons.
And I I like the transition period because if you can't read, you're 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 done. There's no life for you. So I I'm very pleased. Thank you so much.
I I visited three of the schools, Cameron, Aberdeen, and where was it? Elise. We hit there kind of at the at the last third of the the event, so there was an awful lot of folks taking the option not not to be there. I think our General Assembly did us a disfavor in that regard. I think if it's worth worthy enough to isolate these kids for some real concentrated effort, it ought to be mandatory. It is in most other cases, states, by the way. Do we track, these kids have now been identified, they've either made it or didn't. Do we track them into the fifth grade to see how how our efforts, special efforts might have assisted or?
These students are tracked through that individualized reading plan so that if if I am a student that's entering, leaving fourth grade and I'm still not proficient, then in fifth grade, you're looking at what are the interventions that you're providing for me to close that gap. So it is about closing skill gaps, and our schools do that really well through their PLT processes. I'm very pleased our ki- our schools do kid talks, and we're really looking at what are the needs of those schools during that. You'll hear it in different schools that they have a forty-five-minute intervention block, and you see them very much specializing in what this student needs. If I need decoding, then I'm in a decoding group. If I need fluency, then I'm in a fluency group. So we work very diligently. I wouldn't say that I attract individual pieces, we but we look at every kid through that PLT process to ensure that we're closing those gaps.
Good, great. Thank you.
I have another question. Donna, what do you see as the biggest percentage in 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 problem reading? Is it the fluency? Is it the vocabulary? Is is, are they even, or is it?
It it depends. Right now, we're seeing some decoding coming out of our K one, so we're trying to trying to really look and analyze that. Fluency, though, by the time we're hitting to fourth and fifth grade, it's the fluency piece. And again, that layers on with the vocabulary. So those two, to me, go hand in hand. I'm seeing an increase in our IREDDI vocabulary and with the Vocabulary Surge Program that we're using as a core piece, but we've got to continue to really look at how we how we develop fluency.
Okay, and is writing in all incorporated with this?
Oh, yes. Very, very integral.
That's the only thing I was going to say, is writing. Get them writing, and they'll they'll get fluent.
That is.
I just have one question on Slide eight. So this this information, you know, year, year, eight, one more, thank you. You know, year, year, compared. Uh, well, you know, year to year comparisons are always good. Just one question, uh, there's five good cause exemptions. Uh, have those same five good cause exemptions been in effect?
Yep. Since 2012. And you'll see, you may see that little star I did, EOG and good cause, so that 90% is EOG in any of those good causes.
Right, understand, yeah, okay, thank you.
Donna, um, if you have a student that has been, uh, that had to repeat two years before the third grade, do you then give them a 504 or an IEP? What, what, what's your recommendation?
That depends. What I'm going to say is that individualized reading plan, and this is where your PLT and your teachers and all of the stakeholders at the school would pull together a problem-solving team so that we can really look at what are the issues that I may be experiencing. So a lot of that channels through that PLT process.
Okay, thank you.
This is amazing work. Thank you so much for this report. It was great. Our students amaze us every day.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you both.
So would you like to, would, you know, we have been at this for three and a half hours, um, I, I feel like we might need a break. And so, uh, would anyone like to ta- make a motion to move some of the items to our March third work session?
So moved.
Well, I can't make the motion, you got to make the motion.
I make a motion to move the, I make a motion to modify the agenda, which requires a two-thirds vote. I make a motion to modify the agenda to move the remaining two items to the March work session.
I will second that.
Okay.
And just quick discussion, neither one of them seem, I mean, they're, you know, obviously there's interest in them, but they don't seem time-sensitive.
If you're okay, Mr. Benway, okay. All right, uh, are we ready for a vote? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. So seven, zero, it passes. Thank you so much. We'll make that a, agenda, um, change. So at this time, um, we do have board comments. Does anybody want to make a comment? Okay, Ms. Benway? Oh, excuse me, Ms. Bruno, you can tell I need a break.
I do. I really want to say congratulations to Union Pines Boys Wrestling. They're doing an awesome job. Go Vikings.
Thank you. It's great. Dr. Dahl?
I, um, wanted to congratulate the, um, folks in theater at New Century for their production of, um, I think it was called Sally Cotter and the, uh, the, the Sensor Stone, which I went to see. And they, uh, among other things, this group of kids, uh, adapted to having their show canceled or postponed because of weather. And then one of the leads, uh, was only here temporarily. I can't remember if she was an exchange student or was moving or was military, but she'd been scheduled to leave, and so she had, she had to be replaced. And then they had somebody replaced the day of the show, and they had a student step up and take that role, and it all came off wonderfully. And the enthusiasm and the excitement, um, it was just great.
Thank you for sharing. Mr. Benway? Any comments? All right, Mr. Hensley?
I just have one comment, and it's actually about the, uh, conduct of the meeting. We have a committee, we have a construction committee, uh, meeting tomorrow, and we have a policy committing on, on, uh, meeting on the 18th. And, um, I of course know what's going to be discussed at the construction, uh, committee meeting, but I have zero idea what's being discussed, nor do I have any input into what's being, preliminary input what's being discussed in the policy committee, just like no one here, uh, other than Robin and, uh, and Amy have any input as to what we're discussing at the policy, at the construction committee meeting. So I hope this is the last work session that we have without committee reports where we talk about what we're doing in committee and get input early on from the board as a whole, because it's really frustrating. I mean, I'd like to have everyone's input as to what we're discussing tomorrow, but anyway, hopefully that'll be rectified next month. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Johnson?
Uh, just that we were able to visit, um, me and Robin were able to go out and visit a good number of schools. Uh, was very impressed. We did a swing through the Northern Moore, uh, trip. We missed Northmore High because they were doing testing at that time, uh, but looking forward to going out and seeing the rest of the schools in the district kind of in a new light. And, uh, just really looking forward to hearing the feedback from Carthage Community tonight, and also through the feedback on the portal. Just, uh, looking forward to it.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
All right. Okay, I'm good with my comments as well. Seeing no further business, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? A second? All right. Motion by Ms. Davis, second by Mr. Benway. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll see you back at 5:30.